Good evening, everyone. Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment regular meeting is now in session. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975 has been provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 28th, 2018, and has been posted in the main lobby of the municipal complex on January 4, 2019. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible)
Mr. Bignell?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Eya?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Sedaha?
Here.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Present.
Mr. Mansuri?
Present.
Mr. Schmuel?
Here.
Mr. Conba?
Here.
Vice Chair Skibar?
Here.
And Chair's Woman Federick?
Here. Thank you, Cassandra. We have, as you've noticed from the agenda, we have one postponement. It's case Z-52-2019 and Tran. It has been postponed until January 21, 2020, which is now getting to be difficult to say, and no renotice is required. But must renotice residents that did not receive notice. That was the problem, there wasn't correct noticing. Having said that, can you call the first case, please, Cassandra?
Yes. Case Z-13, 2019. Costco is seeking approval to expand an existing conditional use by adding two fuel dispensers at the end of the existing canopy. Gas stations are a conditional use in this zone. Required setback is a minimum of 35 feet, proposed is 29.9 feet. Number of parking spots required is 773, proposed is 743. Affected property is located in the GBH Zone designated as Block Number 197, Lot Number 9.02 on the Edison Township Tax Map. All paperwork is in order.
Thank you, Cassandra. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Marmora for the applicant Costco. I understand I have a very limited time tonight, so I'll move as quickly as I can. I have a full panel of witnesses, but only plan to call two, my traffic engineer and our planner, to put in the devariance proofs. But certainly willing to call the additional witnesses if there are remaining questions. As the Board Secretary just indicated, what we're really doing is trading some parking spaces that are not really used. There are parking spaces out by the gas canopy to add a pump island and increase the queuing capacity and efficiency of the pump operation. What that does is trigger a conditional use variance because we're coming closer to Vineyard than your setbacks permit. However, our planner will go into that, why that it would be justified. Again, we feel what we are doing is reducing unnecessary parking spaces and adding a great deal of efficiency to the pump operation, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. With that, I'd introduce my traffic engineer, John Harder, to explain what the changes will be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marmora, you can sit if you'd like to, unless you feel more comfortable standing. Your choice.
Thank you very much.
Expert as well. And this here expert as well, although he's been here before, so you can either stand, sit, whichever you feel more comfortable doing, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for the record.
John Harder, H-A-R-T-E-R.
Madam Chair, you indicated that he's been previously accepted as a traffic expert here?
Yes, correct.
So we can go ahead with that?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. And very quickly, we pre-marked three exhibits. Ms. Masterton, our stenographer, already has a record of them. Would you like to just quickly describe them? A1 is on the easel right now, which is the site plan, I believe?
Correct. It's an overall site plan.
Overall site plan. A2 is a landscape plan?
I believe A2 is the blown-up site plan of the fuel area.
Okay. And then A3 is the handout that the members have at their desk. That's our planning exhibit. It consists of six sheets, and our planner, Mr. Rickett, will take you through them. With that, I'll suspend with the question and answer and ask John to just explain to you what exactly we would like you to approve for us this evening.
Sure. Good evening. We prepared a report that focused on parking and also the queuing associated with the Costco. Our office is working on projects from Massachusetts, New Hampshire, down to Florida for Costco. We've done a lot of research over many years. There are really two components. The parking, which we did studies in February, and then also looked at queuing. The overall project is described at the perimeter of the site. You can see at the south, I'll refer to Vineyard Road as east-west. At the south end of the site is where the gas facility is located. You can see the Costco warehouse to the north. We're looking to add two fuel pumps at the south side of the current canopy and expand the canopy to the south. So that would add actually four fueling positions, and not only increase the capacity by having more fueling positions, but also more room to store cars. The parking is the first item. To clarify the numbers, the proposed parking is 708 spaces, and that's a reduction of 17 from the current 725 spaces. The proposed supply will be a 4.66 spaces per thousand square feet of building area. Typically, you find retail 4.5 is very typical now. I know that the township standard here in Edison is five per thousand, so the requirement is 773. We conducted 11 and a half hours of parking demand counts, not only in the Costco building area or the Costco area of the site, but also the entire Vineyard Square Shopping Center that includes anchored to the west by the Walmart. And from those counts, we looked at a weekday, two weekdays, afternoon, midday, and evening, and then Saturday, 11 to 5. And we did find, as we usually do with Costco, another retail Saturday to be the peak. The Costco area on that Saturday in the afternoon around 4:30, we saw up to just over 600 parked vehicles in the Costco area, and that was approximately 85% occupancy of the Costco side. But when you look at the overall Vineyard Square Shopping Center with the Costco, which has a shared parking arrangement, we actually have only just over 1,030 parked vehicles, so a 64% occupancy, so well below. What we really don't want to see is anything over 90% on a typical peak. So I think we're, based on those results, the removal of 17 spaces that are really the least desirable for Costco is really not going to be a detriment, given those findings of the parking demand study. In terms of the vehicle queuing, currently there are eight lanes, and there are two fuel spaces for each lane, and then behind that, there's storage for five vehicles. What is happening often with the Costco, and I'll just flip to the A2. Now back, okay. So what will happen today is vehicles will come in, and at times they're finding it so busy that they will actually force cars to come in and go around this aisle row of parking here to get more stacking. So clearly, the demand is very heavy. It's a very successful site. You've got New York nearby, Staten Island. I think you've had a lot of motorists that are purchasing gas as a result, that are New Yorkers, actually, so it's an active site. The current demand or supply of stacking without that arrangement that's put up temporarily is 56 spaces for cars, including the fueling spaces. When we expand with four more fueling positions and the extra lanes, two more additional stacking lanes, you actually get 70 spaces for vehicles. So we're increasing the storage, physical storage, by 25%, and also processing cars faster. We have studied a Costco just like this, where we expanded before and after where the gas, four fueling positions were added. We studied them before, after, the same time of the year, a year later after the expansion. And we found that it reduced the vehicle queuing on the Saturday peak time by approximately 30% for the storage. And in that case, the queuing was stored well within the new area that we had established. So we expect from that research study in Columbia, Maryland for Costco, that the maximum queuing we observed on a Saturday in February of 61 vehicles would be reduced to a 49, roughly a 49-vehicle queue. So roughly a 20% reduction in overall maximum queuing. And again, so we're estimating 49 maximum queued vehicles, but the storage, as I stated, would be 70 in the future. So we feel we'll be at a much more comfortable space with that expansion of the gas-filling positions. And again, this parking that we're losing is the least desirable for the overall site. So I think that really covers all the direct I had.
I have nothing further for this witness, Madam Chair.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Harder? Yes, Mr. Bignell?
Sir, how many parking spots are you giving up to do this?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bignell?
Right now, I mean, if the cars which are in the queue, if they want to skip it and then go, if they have the way to go out?
Yes.
Do we still have that one?
Yes, there are bypass lanes adjacent to each of the stacking lanes, and we will continue that with the design and expand it so that there is another bypass lane along the perimeter. There was a minor comment about the width of that lane being just under nine feet. It's now proposed as 12 feet for the bypass lane.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Skibar?
Will there be any other change to the traffic flow on the premises?
No. The circulation is remaining the same. We don't expect to have to make that close off the aisle that I described and create that longer queuing area with that. Circulation should be improved because of the changes, but no proposed changes specifically.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Conba?
But given the demand of the site, would there still be the ability for that extended queuing area?
Yes. That aisle row of parking is still in place, so that method of coning off the first entrance, you would still have that ability to create that same extra queuing area, yes.
Okay. Because I mean, it's vital. Because I mean, if you didn't have that, you'd then be backing up your traffic flow into the rest of the shopping.
The next cross aisle, correct.
It would be even worse than it currently is. Thank you.
Any other questions? None? Okay, moving along, Mr. Marmora.
Thank you.
I'll call our planner.
Yes, please.
While he's coming up, I will stipulate, by the way, we have read Mr. Carley's report, we have read Mr. Bignell's report, and we have no problem complying with all of the conditions that they set forth in their reports.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Rickett, would you introduce yourself?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record.
It's Paul Rickett, R-I-C-C-I.
Few qualifications shortly, briefly.
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since the year 2000. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master's degree from Rutgers University, which I received in 1997 in city and regional planning. I have testified in front of this board, but I'm a consultant to five municipalities. I've testified throughout the state, approximately 200 boards throughout the state.
Okay, we'll accept his qualification.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Rickett, you prepared an exhibit of six sheets that we marked as exhibit A3, is that correct?
Yes. I wasn't going to rely on the exhibit this evening, given the board's time. I don't think some of the information is necessary. It's a lot of background information that I think the board knows. If I may, I may just focus on the variance relief and, as needed, bring that exhibit into play. Again, variances that we are seeking, the front yard setback variance, we start with the D3 conditional use variance from Section 37, 21.5, A1E, to allow the pumps to be set back 35 feet where 29.9 feet is proposed. Front yard setback variance to permit a setback of 29.9 feet where 50 feet is proposed, that's from your bulk schedule. We're also seeking the parking variance that was mentioned by the traffic consultant to permit 708 spaces where 725 are required. And there's also a design exception to permit a light pole of 35 feet versus 20 feet. I may just start with that quickly. With the design exception, what the applicant is essentially looking to do is continue the established height of the poles in the area. I would mention that under the Garfalo decision, that if the waiver being acceptable, waiver is reasonable under the facts presented, I think that's the ground for the granting of the exception. Here, we're just looking to continue the existing light pattern throughout the site. We think that makes more practical sense than to introduce lower poles that would require additional poles as well. Regarding, I think the board is aware, I won't spend too much on the criteria, but under the conditional use variance, we have a lower burden of proof than a traditional D1 variance. We don't have to promote particular suitability as the site, the use is already permitted. We don't have to meet the Medici criteria. Again, the site is permitted. And what the commentary case tells us, that we really should focus on the ability of the site to accommodate the problems with not meeting the conditional use standard. And regarding the bulk variances, we're requesting those under the C2 criteria. We can advance the public purpose of the municipal land use law and show that the variances commute without a substantial detriment to the public good in your zone plan, essentially when we can demonstrate that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and that's the ground for the granting of the variance relief. Here, from a planning standpoint, I hope the board will agree that we believe that the changes proposed to the site are relatively modest in nature, changes of the site that will improve the efficiency of the site and allow it to operate in a better manner, a more efficient manner, and one that serves the public interest in that regard. I note that the type of structure that is being proposed here, it's approximately 17 feet, 6 inches tall, your ordinance anticipates 30 feet, and a closed structure. This is really an open-air structure, one that's a lot less substantial than the other type of structures that would be anticipated in this environment. It's being placed in the context of the adjoining building. The automotive use is located approximately 20 feet further southwest towards the roadway. I don't say closer to the roadway, because the roadway shifts in this area due to the right turn in the pass-through lane in front of the subject property. I also note that when this property was originally planned for, there was a right-of-way given, this is a county, the county right-of-way was given to the county, that essentially effectuated the need for this variance, because property was lost along the frontage to allow for those roadway improvements. I note by a way of finding that this is not an application of overdevelopment in your community, it's under the floor area permitted, well, under the building coverage and the impervious coverage for the lot as well. So that tells me as a planner that this site anticipated more development than occurs today. The parking variances, I believe, are clearly justifiable based upon the information provided by the traffic consultant, the demand is being met for parking, therefore not resulting in any negative detriments to the community. And lastly, I just note that this is a longstanding corporate citizen that helps them meet their long-range goals for the site. I believe that this application advances several purposes in this for land use law. Purpose G provides sufficient space to meet the needs of commercial users. I think it, Purpose H, based upon the traffic testimony, helps promote the free flow of traffic. And also, Purpose M, to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development into the more efficient use of land. I note that in this context, the frontage is largely going to remain unchanged, that berm and that landscaping is going to remain in effect, but also additional plantings are going to be added as part of this development that's going to help mitigate any increase moving towards the roadway, over 100 plantings. So we do have site beautification that I wanted to mention as well. I do not believe that this will result in a substantial detriment to the public good, the surrounding property owners. Only potential impact is slightly towards the street, where it doesn't impact any adjoining property owner. And I don't believe it will be a substantial detriment to your zoning ordinance as well. I think your ordinance initially planned for a building to be in this location, barring the exception of a right-of-way taking. Again, this is a facility that continues to provide adequate light air and open space. Essentially, it's an open-air type canopy. And again, that building is relatively modest in height at 17 and 1/2 feet. In summary, I'm speaking very quickly. I know the board has a very active agenda tonight. I believe that this site has the ability to accommodate the problems associated with not meeting all your conditional use standards for the reason I mentioned, and I believe that the benefits of this application clearly outweigh the detriments and clearly serve the public interest in this regard.
Madam Chair, I have nothing further for the witness.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bignell?
Yeah, the only correction I would make is that we view the pole height as a variance, not as a design waiver.
Okay.
All right, so that would be a variance.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Yes, Mr. Skibar?
Madam Chair, and Mr. Carley's report, he did indicate installing sidewalks on Vineyard, and you said you would comply?
We will comply with that. If that's a recommendation, we will certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
And yet, Mr. Problematic?
Would you happen to know how long it will take to build these pumps?
I would have to defer that question.
Representative from Costco, John Paul Andrews, can answer that. You have to introduce yourself for the record first.
Yep.
Mr. Andrews, would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record.
My name is John Paul, first name, Andrews, last name, Director of Real Estate Development for Costco Wholesale.
But that was good timing.
It was. I'll go back and tell the pilot that.
Flew up from Washington and was circling the air above Newark Airport for quite a while today.
Okay, Mr. Taglianetti, ask your question.
I'll ask the question again. How long will it take to build out these pumps?
A typical one-island expansion, which this is, takes about 30 days. Unless we hit some complication, it would be a 30-day construction process.
And then what happens when you're building that out to the adjacent pumps? Are they in operational process?
So currently, there's four islands, which is eight dispensers. Each of those dispensers has a pump on each side. So on the outermost, where we're expanding off of, the two hoses on the outermost of those two dispensers would be disabled. So you would go from 16 fueling positions to 14 temporarily, and then you...
And again, how long would that take?
The entirety of the construction is 30 days. That being down two dispensers is probably more like a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for either gentleman? Yes, Mr. Conba?
He actually just brought up a question, but then I also have a question for the planner, so line him up.
Okay. Mr. Rickett?
Wait, no, no, let's...
No, for him, okay.
Since you're up there.
Okay.
So during construction, is there going to be any type of conage or something? So if you're going to close off those outside two pumps, I've noticed, I'm a pretty frequent customer of your gas station. I've noticed that if there's a closed pump and there's another vehicle that doesn't realize that the pump's closed, they may swerve all over the place trying to get to another pump. Are you going to have some adequate conage out there so that the motoring public realizes?
There would be conage, but there would also be the construction fencing, which would be required. We would have to fence off and have the sediment erosion control and all of that as required.
Excellent, as long as we're not creating a dangerous situation out there.
Yeah, we're the last ones to want to have a member have an accident.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, now you have a question for Mr. Rickett?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Also, with regards to Mr. Bignell's report, Mr. Bignell, Comment F, is that an irrigation system for the site should be provided? Are you willing to agree with that?
I don't think I have the authority to agree to that. I would have to...
You already did, right? Am I correct? Mr. Bignell agreed to Mr. Bignell's report completely.
And it's also on the plan, too, by the way.
Okay.
On the revised plan. I just want to put it on the record.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for either of the gentlemen? None, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'll wave a closing statement. I just represent, we do have the civil engineer here as well, if there are any questions for the site engineer. Otherwise, I'm happy to rest.
Okay, does the board have any other questions for anyone else?
Madam Chair, actually, it's not a question. It's a recommendation for the civil engineer.
You have to introduce yourself, Tungto.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
Yes.
And please state your full name for the record.
First name is Tungto, T-U-N-G-T-O, last name Lamb, L-A-M, from the firm Bowler Engineering, located at 35 Technology Drive.
Madam Chair, I believe Tungto's been accepted as a...
Yes, we'll accept his credential, qualifications, sorry.
So my recommendation is that on your Detail 7 of drawing C10, you have the 6-inch concrete slab that you'll be pouring. You have shown the wire mesh to be in the center. I believe that should be towards the top.
Okay.
That was just a recommendation.
Understood, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, there being nothing else, and Mr. Marmora kindly waving a summation, I'll go out to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard. Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard. There being none, I'll close the case and go to the board, please.
Madam Chair, I think the addition of these new pumps will be a benefit to the establishment that is a heavily-used facility, so anything that will help alleviate some of the queuing and the traffic congestion, I think is a positive, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
And I will just amend it to bring up the point that the pole height is going to be an approved variance as opposed to a design. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Cassandra, please.
Mr. Sedaha?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Mansuri?
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Schmuel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Conba?
Yes, on the motion.
Vice Chair Skibar?
Yes, on the motion.
And Chair's Woman Federick?
Yes, on the motion. Thank you so much, Mr. Schmuel.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
We really appreciate it. Have a nice holiday. Cassandra, you want to read the next case, please?
Yes, it is Care 1, case number Z-46, 2017, Care 1. This is for the public portion and the vote. Section 37, 11, 1, 37, 63, 1, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 16. Preliminary and final site plan approval being sought along with use and bulk variances to construct a new 90,000-square-foot, three-story assisted-living facility. Max building coverage required is 15%, proposed is 16.8%. Max lot coverage required is 30%, proposed is 41.8%. Max FAR required is 25%, proposed is 28%. Max building height required is 40%, proposed is 47%, I'm sorry, 40 feet, proposed is 47 feet. Max coverage of, max number of stories required is 2 1/2, proposed is 3. Affected property is located in the RA Zone designated as Block 410, Lot Numbers 27, 28, 30, 31, and 11C on the Edison Township Tax Map. All paperwork is in order.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tom Troder. I'm an attorney from Keyes, O'Shea, and Energy, and I'm happy to help the applicant, Care 1.
Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're on the last leg of the marathon, as I would say. And from myself, wholeheartedly, and I'm sure from my board, we thank you for all of your patience and for this year-long journey, let's call it. Everybody will be heard this evening, and I think to make things go a little smoothly, so I don't have to say, "You're next, you're next," we'll call the first person up. While that person is speaking, among yourselves, just the next person, get behind him, so we have a constant flow of people, so everybody will get their chance to speak. So having said that, who wants to be first?
Madam Chairman, I...
Okay, excuse me.
Mr. Gazarovski, I know you represent two objectors. We would just like to know if they're here and if they can be identified, please.
........................................................................ ...[1728.33]
They can make comment, they're, they're residents.
Sir, you, excuse me, sir, you represent them. Anyone who is represented by an attorney, those people do not get to speak because they have been spoken for through how many meetings, through you. That is our rules, not our rules, it's the MLU rules, we are quasi-judicial board, those are the rules, and the rules are what we go by. So having said that, ma'am, you were going to come up, do you want to come up, please? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, anyone within 200 feet of the property. I'm so excited that we're on the last leg, I forgot that.
That applies, can you?
And anyone after her at the beginning will be anyone within 200 feet of the property until I say otherwise, please.
If you would raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record.
Yes, my name is Arlene Britt, and my address is 89 King Street. Okay, I have been a resident for the past 39 years, and for the past 20 years, I've lived at 89 King Street, which is located directly behind the existing Care One facility, the Highlands, located on Inman Avenue. And again, for the record, we residents sat here and listened to the Care Board, Care One's attorney and paid experts speak in front of the zoning board at the May 22nd, 2018 meeting, the June 19th, 2018 meeting, the December 18th, 2018 meeting, the February 26th, 2019 meeting, the April 23rd, 2019 meeting, the June 18th, 2019 meeting, the July 31st, 2019 meeting, the September 17th, 2019 meeting, the October 29th, 2019 meeting, and here we are now, December 17th, 2019.
That's why I called it a marathon.
18 months, 10 zoning board meetings, and approximately 23 hours we spent listening to Care One's attorney and paid witnesses presenting an idyllic picture of how our quiet residential neighborhood is going to benefit and not be negatively impacted or disturbed by the intrusion into our neighborhood, that's Zone Residential, Single Family Use Only, by a three-story, 90,000 square foot commercial building with a tractor-trailer size emergency generator storing diesel fuel on the property, a 92-spaces paved parking lot with employees and visitors coming and going 24 hours a day, seven days a week, a parade of delivery trucks and trash pickup trucks. Having lived directly behind Care One facility for the past 20 years, I have personal experience and supporting evidence that proves, number one, Care One is a terrible neighbor; number two, Care One breaks the promises they make to the Edison zoning board and Edison residents; number three, Care One does not maintain its property and landscaping; number four, Care One turns a deaf ear to the complaints from the Edison residents; and number five, Care One's existing facility on Inman Avenue disrupts our quality of life by creating noise and air pollution. Now, actions speak louder than words, and we've heard a lot of words through the marathon, as you say, from Care One's attorney and paid witnesses during the past 18 months. Also, a picture is worth a thousand words, and tonight I will be providing to each board member many pictures, as well as for supporting evidence, that will verify what I am describing, as well as copies of just some of our numerous letters of complaints that we've sent to Care One during the past 20 years.
Before they're handed out, may I please have, I need to have one over here, and you need to also have the attorney for the applicant. No, before you hand them out, please hand them over here, you have to hand one to the attorney for Care One.
Oh, okay, that's the procedure?
And you, you probably should also hand one to Mr. Gazarovski. Can we, Mr. Sedata?
Um-
And please hand one over there.
Okay, so please tell me the order in which I should do it.
Just hand one to the attorney for the applicant, and then hand one to Mr. Gazarovski. And before they're-
You can help with that? It looks like she does.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, let's take the pictures. Okay, and Care One attorney tonight is- No, I keep applying now. Now, ma'am?
Okay, before they're handed out.
Okay. Now, just a moment.
No, wait a minute, no. No, we, wait, we have a couple of questions.
Sure. Of you. Yes.
All right. Let him have an opportunity to get these.
Yeah. Before anything, we want him to have an opportunity to go.
I have, yeah, and this is the issue. Hang on to her for one moment, let me just see if he has a comment first. You need to be by a microphone, so if you want to leave those here, we'll hand them out once we need comments, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Did you get the phone?
She can continue speaking, yes. You can, you can continue speaking as long as you're at the microphone while we're waiting to hear about these exhibits. So, as long as it's not about the exhibits.
Unless he wants to hear.
I will begin with why Care One is a terrible neighbor. Noise and air pollution. Noise from the numerous box trucks making deliveries throughout the day to Care One's unloading dock, which is located behind our house. Noise from the trucks arriving and departing, plus the metal clanging noises from the opening and closing of the back hatches when the trucks are unloading. Two, noise from trash pickup trucks, arriving every Tuesday morning between 5:00 and 5:15 a.m. to empty their commercial-sized metal trash dumpster, which is located behind our house. We are awakened every Tuesday morning between 5:00 and 5:15 a.m. by bang, 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 as the metal dumpster is being emptied into the truck, and then one more, for good measure, bang, when the dumpster hits the ground again. I invite members of the zoning board, Care One's representatives, be on our back deck Tuesday morning at 5:00 a.m. Oh, is 5:00 a.m. a little too early for you? Well, it's a little too early for us, too. I've called the Middlesex County Noise Ordinance to file noise complaints throughout the years, and I was informed they would pass it on to the Edison Board of Health. But even this morning, 5:00 a.m., bang, bang, bang. Three, the noise from snowplows in the middle of the night, we're awakened by bang, of metal hitting and scraping the pavement, then beep, 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 as the snowplows back up, and then bang again, as it scrapes the next row, and then beep, 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 over and over and over again in the middle of the night, so they clear their parking lots for the next morning. Four, noise from their huge emergency generator waking us in the middle of the night when there's a power outage. This tractor-trailer sized emergency generator is located behind our house. The noise from this emergency generator makes it impossible to open our windows when there's a power failure and the emergency generator is running. It is so loud and so annoying that even with our windows closed, we can hear it and are unable to sleep in the summer. Five, noise from their ride-on lawn mowers and the deafening noise from the gas-powered commercial leaf blowers, and the noxious odor of these gas-powered leaf blowers and lawn mowers. Six, noise in the middle of the night and the wee hours of the morning from beep, beep, as cars are being locked and unlocked, as well as noise from car alarms going off in the middle of the night. Now, at the October 27th, 2019 zoning board meeting, we listened to arguments about the credentials and qualifications of the noise experts, and empirical data, and acoustics measurements, and guidelines, and analysis of data, and hypotheticals. We've lived behind the existing Care One facility for the past 20 years. I don't need to know the qualifications of a noise expert, or the empirical data, or the acoustic measurements and guidelines, or analysis of that data, to verify that the noise created by the existing Care One facility is loud, it wakes us in the middle of the night and the wee hours of the morning, and it negatively impacts our quality of life in a residential zone neighborhood. We can testify about the reality of the noise. Next, I will address broken promises and turning a deaf ear to complaints from Edison residents, as well as poor maintenance of their property and landscaping. When reading online reviews of Care One's facilities, unfortunately, the name Care None keeps popping up, and sadly, this name is inaccurate description of how Care One has responded to our 20 years of complaints. When we purchased our home on King Street in June of 1999, there was a small, quiet nursing facility called the Birchwoods on Inman Avenue located on that property. In January, shortly after we moved in, we received the legal notice that the Care One Corporation had purchased the Highlands, and they were seeking variances from the Edison zoning board in order to construct two additions to the front of the existing nursing home out towards Inman Avenue, and that this expansion would not affect the rear of the facility, which borders our property. I, along with just a handful of Edison residents, attended the zoning board meeting in January of 2000. I'm not sure of what the date was, early 2000, and that would rule on the variances. At this zoning board meeting, I was approached by a Care One representative, Joseph Foye Jr., who introduced himself to me and assured me that Care One was going to be a great neighbor, and I quote, "Take better care of the property than the previous owner," unquote. And most importantly, Care One was going to create a sight and sound buffer on the border of our properties, and this sight and sound buffer would consist of a six-foot-high fence with large eight-to-10-foot evergreens planted behind the fence on Care One's property, and then these evergreens will extend high above the fence to be an effective sight and sound buffer. I quote from the March 1st, 2000 letter sent to us by a William G. Burris Jr. at Care One, copy of this letter is the top of the packet that I have provided to each board member. I quote, "Installation of a new six-foot-high, board-on-board, pressure-treated fence and the installation of 30-to-40, eight-to-10-foot white pines, in an effort to create a distinctive buffer between the rear of our facility and the adjacent residents. The previous application proposed the addition of 16 new trees. However, we felt that was insufficient to create the buffer intended," unquote. Next, I quote from the March 23rd, 2000 letter sent to us from Care One's William G. Burris Jr.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
Are they from the letters that we have here?
Yes, they are.
And if that's what's highlighted?
Yes.
Okay, then you don't really have to quote everyone, because once we get to-
Well, I have a point, too. I'm not quoting everything from the letters, but I have salient points from those letters. And we've listened to 23 hours of Care One speaking, I think it's only fair that the residents should be allowed time to speak.
If you, if you would give me a moment, please. Do you have any comments on the letters before I even get to the photos? Do you have a, anything to place on the record?
Some of the letters are not signed, however-
Can you speak up a little bit, please, or bring that closer?
Some of the letters are unsigned, however, if Ms. Britt is prepared to testify that all of these letters were in fact prepared by her and mailed-
Yes.
Sent to Care One, obviously, I'm not objecting, but I would, I think that would be important to establish the photos we're still going through in terms of what they are.
We're only up to the letters, she's discussing the letters. So at this stage, I'm going to ask that the letters be passed out, and we're going to call this, I think, Mr. Gazarovski, your exhibits were O1, 3, whatever it was, right? Am I correct? Were they O1, Cassandra? So I'm going to label these as, starting with R1, and this will be the packet of letters. Okay, let's pass two down, three down. Just give us a moment, please.
Shirley.
Yes, I do, I have mine, thank you.
Okay, got it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. If you would just give the board a few minutes to review the letters, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
And I'm assuming we're, we're putting our attention to what's highlighted, correct?
Yeah, but not ev-, you know, again, you can peruse, I'm not quoting from everything in the letters, obviously, we would be here for a week, and I'm, no, we do not want to be here for another week. But I'm just highlighting some of the salient points.
I'm glad you're here. 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 Everybody good down there? Yeah. Okay.
Should I continue? All right.
Yes, sure.
Okay. Again, I was talking about, in the letters, they're promising us a board-on-board fence in the entire rear of the property with 10-to-12-foot white pines. Now, notice, the pines are now getting bigger. Originally, it was eight-to-10-foot pines, now, the next letter is 10-to-12-foot pines. Located in the letter of March 23rd, 2000, Mr. Burris says that there are going to be evergreens on both sides of the fence. I quote from the March 23rd, 2000 letter, "Evergreens on both sides of the fence." And I'm still quoting from the March 23rd, 2000 letter from Mr. Burris, "There's a deviation in the grade between the rear of her property and the facility, it's going to be regraded, so the visual impact from her property to the site will be limited," end of quotes. Now, if you please look at the photos.
Hold on, one minute, Dan.
No objection.
No objection to the photos.
Okay. Photos, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, got to pass them out, sure, okay.
First, pass them out, I'm going to label these as R2.
So, I, if I may ask a question, I see that you've been writing letters since November 25th, 2001-
Mm-hmm.
Until, um-
Again, I have other letters at home, I have just included certain ones.
Until 2015.
Mm-hmm.
Was there, was there a response?
Nope.
No response to any of your letters?
I, I will include a couple of times that they, I'll talk about the trees in a minute, but basically, crickets, crickets.
Thank you.
Okay. You'll see in the photos, right now, I'm starting with one through eight, you'll see the lovely view we have of Care One's current facility that we look at every day through our windows. We look at a tractor-trailer sized emergency generator, we look at a recently added hect- tractors, tractor-trailer sized metal construction waste container that they placed on the back of their property bordering our property, that's been sitting there now for a year. We look at their rusty trash compactor container. We look at the filthy walls-
And the last one of photo eight, you went one through eight since 2018, so I assume one through eight were all taken in 2018?
Yes, the one through eight are recent within... Since the time that this hearing has... You know, the variance has been put forth.
Okay, fine. So now, go from the next ones and then so you can certify that you took them and when.
Okay. I'm going to refer now to photos nine A, B, C, and 10. The point being, where is the distinctive buffer of large evergreen trees that were promised along the fence? No evergreen trees? Carowarn never planted evergreens behind the entire length of the fence as they promised, never.
When were these taken? What year?
These were taken, again, in 2018.
2018? Were all of these 2018?
Not all of them. I've had, as I get to the replacement, once or through the years.
Okay, great.
Yes. And again, primarily pointing out, there were never any evergreens planted on both sides of the fence as Mr. Burris promised us in March 23rd, 2000 letter that I have given you a copy of. So we look at an overflowing parking lot with no screening. And again, it never goes along the entire length of the property. Now, photo 11. Again, this is... There was no evergreens. Again, this was taken with my cellphone camera. I'm not a professional photographer. These were taken this past winter. You can see their neighbor's fence just ends, no fence behind the back of the property. In this current application before the board, Carowarn states is going to replace the six-foot-high fence with an eight-foot-high fence. And I quote from their current application, quote, "Extending the fence along the rear of the skilled nursing home portion of the site to further screen the skilled nursing home from the adjacent resident uses." Unquote. Now, you'll notice that this was not included in their original May 18th, 2018 notice, but they added it in their September 5th, 2018 notice. Now, didn't Carowarn promise a fence that extends across the entire length of the property back in March of 2000? So if they never built the fence 20 years ago, how can we believe they're going to build the fence now, once they get their variances granted? And shortly after construction and landscaping was completed in 2000, most of the evergreens that Carowarn planted soon died. And so Carowarn just left the dead carcasses in the ground. If you refer to photos 12 and 13, you can see examples of this that I've taken. These go back probably... I wish I had put the years on them. I'm sure I have it at home in my file cabinet. Now, at the December 18th, 2018 zoning board meeting, Carowarn's attorney stated that a sprinkler system is included in the plans for the new facility. So this time, the evergreens are not going to die. Now, adding a sprinkler system is not going to prevent evergreens, trees, shrubs from dying. We all know that evergreens, trees, shrubs don't die just because of lack of water. They sometimes die from too much water. They die from diseases. They die from insect pest infestation. They are damaged, broken, toppled over by weather. Strong winds, ice, heavy snow, and other weather events will destroy the evergreens. Now, at the February 26th, 2019 zoning board meeting, Carowarn's attorney accused the adjacent residents of vandalizing the evergreens on Carowarn's property and stated that she intended to file a police report. Oh, yes, the evergreens were vandalized by Mother Nature, and we have photo and video evidence to show these evergreens being toppled down in an ice and snowstorm. And who paid to have Carowarn's trees removed and cleaned up? Not Carowarn. The adjacent resident paid to have the toppled trees cleaned up and removed from her property. And the adjacent resident is also the one who paid to have replacement trees placed in the ground. Not Carowarn. What's really disturbing was...
Hold on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if you want... I mean, generally, in a lot of instances, I know boards prefer to give the public a bit of latitude in terms of public comment. There is a fair amount of hearsay which is starting to take place, which I don't want to turn this into a trial, but...
Let me just direct everyone that when they do come up and speak, you may speak as to your personal knowledge and what you know, but don't speak for other neighbors. They will have to come up and speak for themselves because that's what the law requires.
May I say something? I have personal knowledge of this because I have seen the photos and the video.
Okay, but that's different than what your comments...
But I was also have personal knowledge, excuse me, because I was present at the meeting when Ms. Aaron's accused the neighbors of vandalizing.
Ma'am, I'm not talking about the meeting. I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm simply stating that we have to keep the record clear because if, depending on however the board rules, someone chooses to appeal, I have to have a clear record and I have to have it noted for the board that you have to have each neighbor speak on their own so that the applicant's attorney has the opportunity to question and cross-examine.
Understood.
Including the board.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, I'm now referring to photos 14, 15, and 16. These photos clearly show Carowarn's lack of attention and maintenance to their property. I took these photos, again, last winter, 2018, as these zoning board hearings were going on. You'll see the evergreen trees that Carowarn planted behind their fence toppled over, left lying on the ground. You'll see the Carowarn fence about to fall over. You'll see dying and evergreens and dead evergreens and other debris just left lying on the ground. And once again, no evergreens as promised planted behind the fence. Now, during the past 20 years, this is how we complained. We complained to the management staff at the Carowarn facility. We complained to Carowarn corporate about the eyesore of the dead evergreens they left in place, the lack of the promised site and sound buffer, and Carowarn's poor maintenance of their property. And as I stated earlier, our complaints were ignored by Carowarn. We commuted the complaints through phone calls to the facility on Inman Avenue, numerous in-person visits I made to the facility on Inman Avenue requesting to please speak with the manager. I waited, and I was given the message, oh, he's at lunch, can't be disturbed, or, ah, he's in a meeting, he'll get back to you. Never happened. I also made, and other neighbors too, phone calls to Carowarn's corporate offices, mailed certified letters to Carowarn's corporate offices, including a certified letter to the Carowarn chairman and CEO, Daniel E. Strauss. I thought, well, you know what? He's going to do something about it. Who cares? It must just be the management at this facility. I have provided to each board member just some of the letters we sent to Carowarn during the past 20 years, along with a copy of the certified mailing receipt I sent to CEO, Daniel E. Strauss, to which I received no response. Seems that the deaf ear goes all the way up to the top. In these letters, you will see repeated over and over, "We've had no response from Carowarn regarding our complaints. When is Carowarn going to live up to the promises it made to the residents in 2000? The back of our property is not a dumping ground for Carowarn's landscapers because they keep throwing their grass clippings and dead debris over a six-foot fence onto our property." On a rare occasion during the past 20 years, when Carowarn, after our constant complaints, replaced... Pulled up the dead evergreens, they didn't plant new ones in its place. Instead, they left huge gaps. Look at photos 17 and 18 for an example of that. They did put in these teeny, tiny, little evergreens, the tips of which are barely visible over the paper, over the fence, excuse me. Absolutely no screening. When I complained to Carowarn, I was contacted by a Mike Bryant, who turned out to be the landscaper they hired to plant these evergreens. And I said, why, you know, why are they so small? And he said, Carowarn would not let me spend the money for large evergreens. This is what they said I'm allowed to replace them with.
I have to object again.
Okay, I'm sorry. If that's considered hearsay, fine. I will continue on. Another example...
Hold on. Hold on.
I was just objecting. She was testifying to what a landscaper allegedly told her.
Okay, I get it. I get it. I can't quote Mike Bryant without him being here, but he... All right, if you look at photos 19, 20, and 21, this is the result of when Carowarn's landscapers dug up the dead evergreens that we complained about. And what they did is they threw the dead evergreens over the six-foot fence onto our property. It's all talking about the same things that were done. So very many things, Carowarn. Everybody good down there? Yep. Okay. Shall I continue? All right. Okay. Again, I was talking about in the letters, they're promising us a board-on-board fence in the entire rear of the property with ten-to-twelve-foot white pines. Now, notice the pines are now getting bigger. Originally, it was eight-to-ten-foot pines. Now, the next letter is ten-to-twelve-foot pines. Located in the letter of March 23rd, 2000, Mr. Burris says that there are going to be evergreens on both sides of the fence. I quote from the March 23rd, 2000 letter, "Evergreens on both sides of the fence." And I'm still quoting from the March 23rd, 2000 letter from Mr. Burris. There's a deviation in the grade between the rear of her property and the facility. It's going to be regraded, so the visual impact from her property to the site will be limited. End of quotes. Now, if you please look at the photos.
Hold on one minute, Dan.
No objection.
No objection to the photos.
Okay. Photos, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, got to pass them out. Sure.
Pass them out. I'm going to label these as R-2.
If I may ask a question? I see that you've been writing letters since November 25th, 2001. Until...
Again, I have other letters at home. I have just included certain ones.
Until 2015.
Mm-hmm.
Was there a response?
Nope.
No response to any of your letters?
I will include a couple of times that they... I'll talk about the trees in a minute, but basically, crickets. Crickets.
Thank you.
Okay. You'll see in the photos, right now, I'm starting with one through eight, you'll see the lovely view we have of Carowarn's current facility that we look at every day through our windows. We look at a tractor-trailer-sized emergency generator. We look at a recently-added Heck Tractor's tractor-trailer-sized metal-construction-waste container that they placed on the back of their property bordering our property that's been sitting there now for a year. We look at their rusty trash compactor container. We look at the filthy walls, the back of their building. I guess they never heard of power washing. We look at the discarded medical equipment and other trash thrown on the ground or leaning against the back of their building, discarded beds and chairs and other medical equipment just thrown outside. We look at the ugly maintenance area and delivery-unloading dock. We look at every day, a parade of box trucks throughout the day. We look at the smoking area that Carowarn created for its employees bordering our property with the open trash container, obviously attracting rodents, next to the table and chairs they put outside for the smoking area for their property at the back of our property. We look at the trash and empty food containers that blow through the boards of the fence onto our property from their picnic area or their smoking area. We look at the ugly views of vehicles double-parked and the newly-added enormous shiny silver ventilation dome.
Ms. Britt, excuse me. Let's go... You went one through eight, so we have to ask you a couple of questions just aside...
Sure. May I have a copy of those that you're referring to?
Yeah, that's just... Thank you.
Because I do reference the other ones as I go through.
Did you take these pictures?
Throughout the years, yes, I did.
Okay. And the last one of photo eight, you went one through eight since 2018. So I assume one through eight were all taken in 2018?
Yes, the one through eight are recent within... Since the time that this hearing has... You know, the variance has been put forth.
Okay, fine. So now, go from the next ones and then so you can then certify that you took them and when.
Okay. I'm going to refer now to photos nine A, B, C, and 10. The point being, where is the distinctive buffer of large evergreen trees that were promised along the fence? No evergreen trees? Carowarn never planted evergreens behind the entire length of the fence as they promised, never.
When were these taken? What year?
These were taken, again, in 2018.
2018? Were all of these 2018?
Not all of them. I've had, as I get to the replacement, once or through the years.
Okay, great.
Yes. And again, primarily pointing out, there were never any evergreens planted on both sides of the fence as Mr. Burris promised us in March 23rd, 2000 letter that I have given you a copy of. So we look at an overflowing parking lot with no screening. And again, it never goes along the entire length of the property. Now, photo 11. Again, this is... There was no evergreens. Again, this was taken with my cellphone camera. I'm not a professional photographer. These were taken this past winter. You can see their neighbor's fence just ends, no fence behind the back of the property. In this current application before the board, Carowarn states is going to replace the six-foot-high fence with an eight-foot-high fence. And I quote from their current application, quote, "Extending the fence along the rear of the skilled nursing home portion of the site to further screen the skilled nursing home from the adjacent resident uses." Unquote. Now, you'll notice that this was not included in their original May 18th, 2018 notice, but they added it in their September 5th, 2018 notice. Now, didn't Carowarn promise a fence that extends across the entire length of the property back in March of 2000? So if they never built the fence 20 years ago, how can we believe they're going to build the fence now, once they get their variances granted? And shortly after construction and landscaping was completed in 2000, most of the evergreens that Carowarn planted soon died. And so Carowarn just left the dead carcasses in the ground. If you refer to photos 12 and 13, you can see examples of this that I've taken. These go back probably... I wish I had put the years on them. I'm sure I have it at home in my file cabinet. Now, at the December 18th, 2018 zoning board meeting, Carowarn's attorney stated that a sprinkler system is included in the plans for the new facility. So this time, the evergreens are not going to die. Now, adding a sprinkler system is not going to prevent evergreens, trees, shrubs from dying. We all know that evergreens, trees, shrubs don't die just because of lack of water. They sometimes die from too much water. They die from diseases. They die from insect pest infestation. They are damaged, broken, toppled over by weather. Strong winds, ice, heavy snow, and other weather events will destroy the evergreens. Now, at the February 26th, 2019 zoning board meeting, Carowarn's attorney accused the adjacent residents of vandalizing the evergreens on Carowarn's property and stated that she intended to file a police report. Oh, yes, the evergreens were vandalized by Mother Nature, and we have photo and video evidence to show these evergreens being toppled down in an ice and snowstorm. And who paid to have Carowarn's trees removed and cleaned up? Not Carowarn. The adjacent resident paid to have the toppled trees cleaned up and removed from her property. And the adjacent resident is also the one who paid to have replacement trees placed in the ground. Not Carowarn. What's really disturbing was...
Hold on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if you want... I mean, generally, in a lot of instances, I know boards prefer to give the public a bit of latitude in terms of public comment. There is a fair amount of hearsay which is starting to take place, which I don't want to turn this into a trial, but...
Let me just direct everyone that when they do come up and speak, you may speak as to your personal knowledge and what you know, but don't speak for other neighbors. They will have to come up and speak for themselves because that's what the law requires.
May I say something? I have personal knowledge of this because I have seen the photos and the video.
Okay, but that's different than what your comments...
But I was also have personal knowledge, excuse me, because I was present at the meeting when Ms. Aaron's accused the neighbors of vandalizing.
Ma'am, I'm not talking about the meeting. I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm simply stating that we have to keep the record clear because if, depending on however the board rules, someone chooses to appeal, I have to have a clear record and I have to have it noted for the board that you have to have each neighbor speak on their own so that the applicant's attorney has the opportunity to question and cross-examine.
Understood.
Including the board.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, I'm now referring to photos 14, 15, and 16. These photos clearly show Carowarn's lack of attention and maintenance to their property. I took these photos, again, last winter, 2018, as these zoning board hearings were going on. You'll see the evergreen trees that Carowarn planted behind their fence toppled over, left lying on the ground. You'll see the Carowarn fence about to fall over. You'll see dying and evergreens and dead evergreens and other debris just left lying on the ground. And once again, no evergreens as promised planted behind the fence. Now, during the past 20 years, this is how we complained. We complained to the management staff at the Carowarn facility. We complained to Carowarn corporate about the eyesore of the dead evergreens they left in place, the lack of the promised site and sound buffer, and Carowarn's poor maintenance of their property. And as I stated earlier, our complaints were ignored by Carowarn. We commuted the complaints through phone calls to the facility on Inman Avenue, numerous in-person visits I made to the facility on Inman Avenue requesting to please speak with the manager. I waited, and I was given the message, oh, he's at lunch, can't be disturbed, or, ah, he's in a meeting, he'll get back to you. Never happened. Anyone driving down Inman Avenue, well, let me back up a little bit. Anyone driving down Inman Avenue past the existing Care One facility could attest to the fact that there are vehicles parked on Inman Avenue in front of the facility. There are vehicles parked on the grass in front of their parking lots. There are vehicles parked on the lawn in front of their building. There are vehicles parked along the curbs. And I know that Care One's attorney said they're going to add 11 more parking spaces to the existing parking lot. So just thinking about this, they said that there's going to be a 92-spaces parking lot in this new facility that's going to have, and the experts say there's going to be no impact on traffic, no additional traffic congestion. So how are these 92 vehicles going to arrive at this parking lot? We know the only way in and out is Inman Avenue. And Inman Avenue is a narrow, winding road that ends in a T-intersection that is constantly backed up. Also, if you look at photo 22, there is a very sharp blind curve in Inman Avenue. And their expert has said that when their trucks are going to exit there, they're going to be turning left, not going right, because they're not going to add to any of the traffic at the end of Inman and Old Rowerton. So if you look logically at this sharp curve, as their big trucks are coming out of the parking lot to make a left, the cars going west on Inman Avenue are not going to see those big trucks until they're around the bend, and you're going to be increasing accidents. And we know from living that that curve is dangerous. I'm sure everybody living in this area has slipped and slided around that curve when it's icy, when it's raining, when it's snowing. Yes? And so by adding more traffic, it's going to be dangerous.
You can't do that, please. You know, we do have to go, as Ms. Shaw said, everything we do up here, we do for a reason. As she said, we don't know how the board is going to vote, but if there's an appeal that comes up, the things that have to be on record can't be everyone speaking at once.
Okay.
So, and I ask you again now, you've been speaking almost 40 minutes. I would really wish you would come to a conclusion so I can let everyone else speak.
Okay, I will go to my conclusion.
I know a council meeting is, you're limited to three or four. And as I say, I'm giving you a lot of latitude because you have been very, very patient through this whole thing, but I really want to give everyone out here a chance to speak.
All right, I will go to my end. Okay. As evidenced by the photos and the letters I've provided to each board member, I will repeat, Care One is a terrible neighbor. Care One breaks its promises to the residents and the zoning board. Care One does not maintain its property. Care One turns a deaf ear to the Edison residents' complaints, and this Care One facility creates noise pollution, air pollution, increased traffic, is an eyesore and does not belong in a residential zoned area for single-family houses. We depend on the zoning board to preserve and protect our residential neighborhoods, and we are looking at how you vote.
Excuse me, ma'am, just wait one minute.
Wait a minute.
Hold on, ma'am. Ma'am?
Yes.
One second. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No? Okay, does the board have any questions?
No. Okay, fine. Gentlemen, sir, come on up.
Sir, would you raise your right hand to sell and we swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record along with your address.
My name is Ronald Britt, and I live at 89 King Street, Edison, New Jersey. I'm here tonight to state my opposition to the Care One application. The Care One to Burchwood LLC application to the Township of Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment for preliminary and final site plan approval and all land use, use variances, including but not limited to height variance, floor area ratio variance, and bulk variances as set forth in this application to construct a new approximately 90,000-square-foot facility, three-story building, which is a commercial-for-profit assisted-living facility, should be denied in its entirety for the following reasons. Number one, this application to construct a commercial-for-profit assisted-living facility in a residential area does not conform with the Edison Township Master Plan. Number two, this application to construct a commercial-for-profit assisted-living facility in a residential area does not meet or conform to the current zoning of the area, which is residential RA and current zoning laws. Number three, this application does not conform with the nature and character of the existing residential area, which is comprised of one- and two-story family residential homes. The proposed 90,000-square-foot building would be 26 to 36 times larger than the typical area homes. Number four, this application exceeds the maximum allowable building coverage by 1.8%. The applicant plan requests a maximum building coverage of 16.8%, whereas 15% is permitted. Number five, this application exceeds the maximum number of permissible stories within the zone. Applicant plan is for three-story building, whereas two-and-a-half stories are permitted. Number six, this application exceeds the maximum building height requirement of the zone. The applicant plan is 47 feet, whereas 40 feet is permitted. At a height of 47 feet, it would be eight times higher than the height of an average person. If constructed at the 20-foot-above-grade level, it would be 11 times taller than an average person. Number seven, this application grossly exceeds the maximum lock coverage by 11.8%. The applicant plan is for maximum lock coverage of 41.8%, whereas 30% is permitted. This application grossly exceeds the maximum floor area ratio by 13.7%. The applicant plan is for floor area ratio of 0.2843, whereas 0.25 is permitted. Number nine, all variances and waivers that the applicant is requesting violate all of the applicable Edison Township codes, all of them. This application cannot use existing conditions at the Care One Highland Skilled Nursing Home Facility to justify or to verify that the requested new use in this application, cannot justify or verify the requested new use in this application. Every zoning application should have to stand on its own merit. Number 11, the applicant's tree conservation and tree planting plans have changed since May 2018 due to significant public objections to the applicant's original plan, which would have resulted in a deficit of more than 250 trees. The applicant's attorney verbally stated at the April 23 zoning board meeting, "They will plant 1,000 trees of unspecified type and height." Well, as of today, it is unclear how many trees and what types of trees Care One will actually plant, and who will verify the actual number and type of trees. Based upon 19 years of negative experience with Care One's upkeep and maintenance of landscaping and difference of Care One's management at the current Care One facility at 1350 Inman, it is doubtful that 1,000 trees will actually be planted. And it is highly likely that many of these trees will die within one to two years of planting due to inadequate care. This is but one of many examples where the applicant's site plan is vague and lacking in detail. Number 12, this application, if approved, will negatively affect all of the surrounding area residential homes by reducing the residential property, residential real estate property values of area homes due to locating this large commercial building next to residential homes on a residentially zoned property. At the July 30 meeting, a Care One consultant presented the results of a flawed and irrelevant study of several residential real estate sales for properties located near but not adjacent to an extended care facility. A zoning board member commented that the study failed to provide one single example of an analogous construction of a large commercial facility right in the backyard of a quiet residential, non-commercial neighborhood. This facility, if constructed, would negatively impact the surrounding community and quality of life since this facility will operate 24/7. It will be an eyesore to the existing neighborhood and surrounding area. It will result in excessive construction-related noise, thus in air pollution from construction vehicles during estimated one-and-a-half to two-year site construction phase. And as you all know, Care One has chosen not to notify the county to County Road that they are going to have a construction project going right on a county road. Next, it will result in frequent delays and partial road closures on Inman Avenue during the estimated one-and-a-half to two-year site construction phase. It will create additional noise disturbances and air pollution during 24/7 facility operation and during testing and operation of their trailer-truck-sized emergency power generator. Number 13, the applicant's existing facility has not met all conditions that were placed upon them when they received their original approvals on April 25, 2000, for requested nonconforming, nonpermitted use variances authorizing construction of two one-story 5,180-square-foot additions to the applicant's then-existing nursing and convalescent facility, which was previously known as Burchwood Convalescent and Rehabilitation Center. For example, the applicant failed to plant sufficient landscaping to screen the facility from view. The applicant failed to construct a fence to screen their parking lot from neighboring King Street properties. Number 14, the applicant's existing facility has negatively impacted numerous homes adjacent to the rear of their property due to water runoff, which has produced flooding at some existing homes, excessive noise disturbances, debris and trash on the applicant's property creating a public eyesore, trash and garbage blowing and encroaching onto surrounding neighborhood properties, not being a good neighbor, a documented history of unkept broken promises, not properly maintaining the partial wooden slat fence and property in conformance with Edison maintenance ordinances, numerous complaints to the Edison Township Council regarding the applicant's site maintenance, eyesore conditions, broken promises, and repeated failure to resolve neighborhood complaints prompted a site inspection by Mr. Jay Elliott, Director of Edison Department of Health and Human Services, on June 12, Frequent noisy box truck deliveries, typically five to seven per day, there are frequent noisy box truck deliveries, five to seven per day, was stated by one of the applicant's witnesses that there would be approximately seven deliveries per week. Five to seven, it's not hearsay. This is my testimony. It is very, it can be verified by me. I have actually witnessed this. So again, this is not hearsay testimony. Okay, so there was widespread opposition to the Care One zoning application. In August 2018, a door-to-door petition was circulated to residents living within the...
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. None of that can come in to, even before this board. There may be a petition, there might be people who have spoken out against or signed a petition. That is something that this board cannot consider. So you can testify as to your personal knowledge. Again, I come back to that, and there's a reason for it. I do have to preserve this record, and I think, I don't know if you have a comment on this, but I think we do have to have the record clear if it does go up in appeal either way. Okay?
Okay. I was prepared to submit the petition, but obviously I cannot. Many of those residents are here tonight. They can actually testify that they signed the petition. And I do want to say it was signed by 22 homeowners, and that represents 90% of all homeowners within the 200-foot notification.
Again, I'm going to...
Again, just so the board is clear, the board cannot consider a petition or the signing of a petition. It is the testimony before this board by each individual that must be considered.
Okay. So, well, as I look around the room tonight, I've seen a significant large number of residents who are here. So, since we can't introduce the petition...
Sir, first of all, into the microphone, and as I said, I'm, anybody who wants to talk this evening is going to get a chance to talk, so all they have to do is come on.
And I have to object to the suggestion that by pointing to a number of residents in the room substantiates the petition.
Correct. So...
I think this is ample evidence that these people have come week after week.
Excuse me, let us please get off the petition subject right now.
That is not a petition. This is actually real people.
Well, when the people come up, they will speak for themselves. That's what we need. We need the people to speak for themselves.
Okay, I'll move on.
Okay.
Okay, next, is there really a need for the proposed Care One Extended Care Facility to be built next to the existing facility on Inman Avenue? At the Edison Zoning Board meeting on December 18, 2018, Mr. Timothy Hodges, Care One Chief Strategy Officer and Head of Business Development, stated his marketing research found only three extended care facilities. These are Brighton Gardens, located at 1901 Oak Tree Road, Edison. They have 118 beds, and they are within a three-and-a-half-mile radius of the existing Care One facility. There is Whispering Knolls. They are located at 62 James Street, Edison. They have 126 beds, and they are within a five-mile radius of the existing Care One facility. There is Heritage at Clara Barton. They are located at 1015 Amboy Avenue, Edison, and they have 98 beds, 6.7 miles radius from the existing facility. I do want to point out that those three facilities are all in what would be called or considered to be commercial areas, areas that are not residential. Okay. So, Mr. Hodges' testimony was purposely misleading. His choice of boundary conditions is arbitrary and capricious. He arbitrarily chose the existing Care One facility on Inman Avenue, which is located near the intersecting boundaries of Edison, Scotch Plains, and South Plainfield as the center point of this five-mile radius, and included only those facilities located in Edison. Now, nearby Alzheimer's dementia care facilities in Union County were excluded from Mr. Hodges' analysis. If the center point of Mr. Hodges' five-mile radius was moved to another location closer to the center of Edison, say the Edison Menusipal Building, right where I'm standing, or to the Menlo Mall, the number and identity of Alzheimer's dementia care facilities would be quite different. Now allow me to demonstrate using myself as a center point. If you take me and I'm the center point, and my arm spread is six, maybe six feet, radius three feet...
Sir, you have to be, you have to be to the microphone, because they won't pick it up.
Okay, if I wave my arms about, a certain group of people will be enclosed by that radius. Now, if I stand over here and I did the same thing, zero people will be included in that radius. So it all depends, where is your center point? And that's why I said his argument is misleading. Now, based upon an internet search using multiple sources and follow-up calls, it was determined there are at least two additional Alzheimer's dementia care facilities.
Objection.
Yeah.
Why are you, objection? Anybody could find this information. You can look in the internet, and one of my exhibits actually shows them and describes the facility.
Mr. Britt, sir, sir, I'm going to stop you, okay? There are certain things this board can and certain things the board cannot consider. Obviously, information that's evident to the board, the board members are residents. I think they're familiar with the Township of Edison. So what you have to do is allow us to indicate that we need to move forward and hear your objections, and I think you've enumerated a significant number of them. And I understand that you're talking about the rest of the town, but that's, the board has to consider this application on its face, and that's what it must do.
Well, this application and the testimony were factually incorrect. I am pointing out the deficiencies in the application. Is that not relevant? I don't understand that. How can that not be relevant? You tell me.
Go ahead. Your specific objection, please.
Yeah, my specific objection is to the...
Ed, is that microphone working correctly? Okay.
My specific objection was...
We just ran, uh, test one, two?
Thanks, please. My specific objection was the testimony was going in the direction of an internet search and now testifying about alleged information on the internet, which is not actually being presented to the board but merely being filtered through the testimony. And then additionally, I believe he was about to start testifying as to what he heard from other people regarding, and I...
No, that's not correct.
Sir, excuse me.
That is not what I testified. This was an internet search that was backed up by phone calls and verified information.
Sir, we're going to stop you. We're going to stop you. Again, this is a, I mean, I know people do not understand, but you see court proceedings. This is a little bit different than zoning board. We are a quasi-judicial court. We have to abide by certain MLUL rules and regulations. Everything we do, we do for a reason. And right now, we're telling you, you cannot go in this direction. We would just appreciate it if you would stop there, if you have any more. And I'm going to say the same thing I said to your wife. I'm giving you a lot of latitude because you've been here a long time, but also, you're taking up a lot of time. I know everybody out here has to go to work tomorrow morning, and I want everyone out here to be able to speak. So I would like you to conclude what you have to say, come to a point, so I can go to the next people, persons, whoever is out there that wants to speak. Please.
And if I may, just to, just to be clear, only one person can speak at a time without interruption because, quite frankly, the reporter here has to take down everything we're saying so that the record is preserved. So let's please extend that courtesy as much as we can, okay?
So if you can just wrap it up and then, you know, have everyone else out there have their turn, because, you know, as I say, if it was any other board, a lot of boards limit you to three to six minutes, and I have not done that, and I don't usually do that, but you are taking an unusually long period of time, and I do want to give everyone out here the chance to talk.
All right, well, I do want to point out again that there were approximately 23 hours of previous testimony, predominantly by Care One, so I think I have...
Believe me, we all lived through it, so we're very aware of that. And that's why I am giving you some latitude, but as I say, your wife went for almost 45 minutes, and now you've been going for almost a half an hour, and I want to be fair to the other people out, the other people in the public.
Okay, so I will move more quickly. There are four nursing care facilities that have Alzheimer's care located nearby within five miles in Union County. There is the Roosevelt Care Center on Parsonage Road. I have a handout that's a printout from their webpage. It tells you exactly what I said. It verifies it, the number of beds. They have Alzheimer's care. So if you don't believe something that's presented to you in writing, what do you believe? That's the point. Okay, so I will skip the other webcare searches, but they have listed in Middlesex and Union County between 38 and 50 additional facilities.
Objection.
Noted.
Noted, thank you.
Okay, so in addition to these brick-and-mortar facilities, there are never increasing number of services that provide in home health care service. For example, there's HomeInstead.com. Do you object to that?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I, okay, we're now, um, excuse me, sir, we're going a little further afield. Again, please focus on this application. You've brought a number of points to fruition in your discussion this evening, but I think we need to stick with just this application, okay?
I believe that testimony was part of the application, and it was repeated by Care One's expert witness, Paul Phillips. He reported the same erroneous information on June 18, 2019. If you examine the transcripts, you will find his testimony, three facilities.
Sir, you can testify as to your personal opinions. I don't have any objection to that, but the, you're attempting to bring in...
It's not personal, I'm sorry, it's not personal opinion, it's verifiable, but I will move on. So, Mr. Timothy Hodges also testified in December 18, 2018, that Care One operates 31 facilities, and there's a need for 106 beds to be the minimal number to be considered. Now I ask, why is 106 considered to be the minimum feasible number of patient beds? The answer is to maximize corporate profits. Care One LLC is a privately-held-for-profit company that has more than 70 nursing and assisted-living facilities located in eight states, including New Jersey, Massachusetts, and Virginia. A total of 32 of these facilities are located in New Jersey, making it the largest assisted-living facility in the state. Care One LLC admits and discharges over 20,000 patients annually. The company was founded in 1999, has approximately 15,000 employees, and is headquartered in Fort Lee, New Jersey. Key persons are Daniel Strauss, founder, chairman, and CEO, and Timothy...
Mr. Britt, you're going off course. I'm sorry. I'm going to have to cut you off if you don't come to a conclusion. Again, it is not fair to the other people who are sitting out there who want...
I'm sure if you ask the people behind me, that they would allow me to continue.
If I may...
Why don't you address the crowd behind me?
Because we can't, number one. Number two, if you, if I may, there are close to, and I did count, over 35 persons out there. I don't know how many of them will speak, but if everyone wants... I don't know how many of them will speak, but if everyone wants to take 30 minutes, we will be here a significantly longer time, and we will not conclude this evening. But more importantly, again, and I'm going to read directly from the MLUL, so you folks understand it. The board chairman can reasonably control the length or time for presentations, particularly where they become repetitive. She's not, as the board chairperson has...
I don't believe this information is repetitive.
Excuse me, I'm not done, sir. Excuse me, I'm not done. The board chairperson will make that determination at a time when she determines it is appropriate, but she can reasonably limit the time and number of witnesses. This is in the MLUL. She's chosen not to do so at this time, but I will tell you, we cannot go far afield from this application. This is the only application this board may consider and the information concerning this application.
Now, if I would really, after reading that, I would really appreciate you getting down to the end. We don't really want to hear about all the other facilities. Just give us your reason why you do not want this facility.
Well, I think I have, and I think I'm trying to.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say.
I will move directly to the summary.
Again, one person at a time, and I am the chair.
I will move directly to the summary. I will skip two pages of testimony.
Correct.
Okay, to summarize, the proposed facility does not belong in a residential zone. The proposed facility does not comply with or meet the standards of numerous zoning restrictions. The applicant has been unresponsive to neighbor complaints and has continued to be a bad neighbor. To gain approval for the previous Care One expansion in 2000, the applicant never, the applicant overpromised and underdelivered. There is significant public opposition to the proposed Care One facility, as I tried to point out. The applicant's witnesses have provided misleading and accurate testimony, some of which I was not permitted to talk about, there was more, and how can they, how can the applicant or its witnesses be trusted? Approval of this construction provides no benefit of the Edison's reticence, and that is the part where you cut off my testimony. The Care One Corporation would be the sole beneficiary if the facility is permitted to be constructed. If it does not comply, you must deny. I repeat, if it does not comply, you must deny. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Okay, the next person up, and remember, we're still within 200 feet, Mr. Karabin. Okay, yeah, and then we'll go to Mr. Karabin. And remember, we are still within 200 feet.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, and I promise to be brief as well.
Okay, well, hold on. Please state your full name for the record, as well as your address first.
My name is Jean Anne Dikey. I live at 81 King Street. I am directly behind their parking lot. I corroborate everything my neighbors have said. They are terrible neighbors. I have made numerous phone calls. Nobody will speak to us. They should be denied for all the reasons that have been pointed out. Also, my mother was a patient there. She was there less than 24 hours. My mother had breast cancer, congestive heart failure, and diabetes. They gave her no food and no medication, and in less than 24 hours, she was at the emergency room. They could not tell me what hospital. They could not provide a chart to the emergency room doctor. They are neglectful, horrible people. They should not be allowed to take care of other old people because, especially dementia people that can't speak for themselves. So I hope you will deny them. Sorry, I'm nervous, I'm not used to public speaking.
That's okay, not a problem. How would you like to be up here?
Not so much.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we really appreciate that. Mr. Karabincheck, if you want to come up, please.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And Assemblyman Karabincheck, if you could please state your full name and your address for the record.
Sure, it's Rob Karabincheck, 84 Webb Street, Edison, New Jersey. I agree with what Ron had stated earlier. All of the specific points to reject this application were noted, and that also mimics the reports that were put on file for the different variances that were requested. Obviously, you've also heard about all of the emotional pieces of this, where people living next to it. I think you should absolutely take that into consideration. I know the board has a tough decision to make tonight, and I wholeheartedly believe that you should deny this application. This is not the proper place for this facility. I know that there's other places, as was previously stated, less than a mile and a half away, 12 acres, they could have bought, that they could have put it, and they're not interfering with any residential people, nobody. Thank you.
All right, who else wants to come up after Mr. Karabincheck? Remember, within 200 feet of the property. As I say, just keep yourself coming up, because everyone's getting a good chance. That was the whole purpose of this.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And would you please state your full name for the record, providing your address?
Yeah, my name is Ravpreet Syali. I reside at 97 King Street.
Hold on, sir. Did you catch that spelling? You'll get it, okay.
Can you say that again, please? Can you say your first name, first and last?
Ravpreet Syali, R-A-V-P-R-E-T, last name Syali, S-Y-A-L-E-E. Respected board members, I live within the 200 feet proximity of the proposed project, and I completely agree with all the points that have been said before me. To give you insight into what my current state is, I bought into my home in 2017, and within the year of my stay, I was given the first notice of the projected building. I would like to draw your attention to the angst and anxiety that this brings to me in addition to the lack of pride and ownership into the place that I just bought, hoping that this will be my permanent home, and doing my research of the neighborhood, the master plan, all of that led me into making this decision, and that notice pretty much negated that. The proposed three-story construction looking into my home completely invades my privacy and raises a serious concern around prying eyes who might have a myriad of malicious intent. We on King Street, Webb Street, and the neighborhood streets, we are a very close community, neighborhood, and our kids know each other by names, they go to each other's houses, they roam freely in that particular street, and having prying eyes on that, them just puts our kids directly in harm's way. Another concern I have is around the lack of respect the application has presented for the zoning laws, requesting further variances on top of the request to change the actual zoning classification going against the master plan. They've taken previous exemptions for granted and have doubled down on it. In hindsight, their intent to do this eventually is absolutely evident, leading up to this request, by them purchasing adjacent properties and held them for almost a decade. In some claims, they've made claims that these properties had been kept as rental properties. I can vouch for this, the time that I've been here since 2017, there has been absolutely no rentals. Those properties are absolutely abandoned, and they clearly show the lack of upkeep. The windows are broken, you can see wildlife crawling in and out of them. It is absolutely absurd to take their claim at face value. The proposed structure itself gives the surrounding an unmistakable commercial look and feel. Their case has attempted to portray efforts around trying to have it blend in, or they're absolutely absurd. I would like to bring to attention that all renderings showing exposure to the facility show an angle at street level, which is below the height of the subject property, and they take the full view of the homes into view. This photography angle is an optical illusion and a photography technique commonly known as the miniature effect, to make larger objects appear smaller. Please take that into account. I would also like to highlight the unfairness of how this whole process forces us residents to defend the master plan. We residents have been pitted against a for-profit, large-scale business to protect our lifestyle, our surroundings, our safety, our home equity, resale values. I'm sure you're well aware of the associated costs that us neighbors have had to incur for the experts that we've had to hire to make this case comprehensive enough. There's a lot of other points that Ron and Erin have already mentioned before me, so I won't go into that, but in conclusion, I implore you to please put an end to this case at your first available opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very well put. The next person.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your full name and address for the record.
Sunil Bandari. Address is 95 King Street, Edison, New Jersey.
Sir, you weren't here before. Are you Mr. Gazarovski's client?
No.
Oh, okay, fine, go ahead.
Yeah, so I completely agree with all the points raised by Ron and Ravi, and I want you to deny the application. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, that's great. All right, come on, whoever wants to come up next, as I say. Yeah, we're still within 200 feet, I haven't said anything different.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record, including your address.
My name is Raj Tiagarajan. I live in 93 King Street, directly behind the existing Care One facility.
Okay, sir, what would you like to tell us? I assume you agree with everyone else, correct?
I agree with everyone.
Okay, I want that on record.
Yeah, I agree with all the facts. I consider them to be facts.
Correct.
On January 1st, 2018, there was an attempted robbery in my house. That was New Year's Day. Luckily, the kitchen window was broken in. Luckily, the alarm went on, and so they didn't come into the house. We were away. When we came back, the cops were there, you know? And after that, I saw footprints on my deck. I tried to follow it. It led through the Care One facility, and there is a small road, like a driveway, and the footsteps leads up to that point. I thought I could get some video evidence to see who might have come in, but I was not successful, so I thought because Care One is there, and since the footsteps led through their property, I went to Care One about 10 days later, explained them the situation, what has happened. I was made to wait like more than an hour, and finally, the facility's manager showed up. They said they cannot, they will not even tell if there is any cameras. They were so rude, they didn't try to understand what we were going through, and they were Having seen that firsthand, you know, something else also happened. Within a week, I couldn't get a contractor to come and fix the window, so it was temporarily patched up, as you can imagine, on January, in January, it's very cold. We had a false alarm. We were sleeping in the second floor. All of us, you know, we are paranoid because of what has happened. My younger daughter, who's in high school, we turned on the light, she was like, I saw somebody, somebody is running. It's within my house, you know? And I'm trying to go down, my wife is saying, don't go. It's dangerous, don't go. We call 911, and then after some time, reluctantly, I went into the house. I couldn't, I didn't see anyone. I was scared to go into the basement, like, the cops showed up, they came, they checked everything. It was not there. But you know, my daughter claims she saw somebody. It is, it's out of fear. My question is, when this commercial place is operating, does Care One check if their employees are on any such offender list? If they are checking, how about the contractors? They have so many contractors, people come in all the time, visitors, everyone. Do they check? There are so many children in the neighborhood. They run around, they do not know boundaries. We can walk into Care One, soon anyone can come into this place also. There is no security, there is no one to check who's coming into Care One, are they employees, are they contractors, are they visitors? Nothing is there. It is not a residential area. We know our neighbors. How do we know thousands of people who are coming in? Children's safety is at risk. I was listening to the experts, the so-called experts. They were not really experts. There was a realtor who said, when a facility like this comes, there is no change in value of the property. I can't even believe that we consider him an expert. And there was another expert who said there are like 6,000 Alzheimer's patients which require such a facility. Even assuming it is true, how many Alzheimer's patients drive to their home to make the distance to be any factor? The board members should visit my house, my backyard, to see how this place looks. I saw beautiful rendering. It is absolutely untrue. You guys should visit, take a look, and make a decision for yourself. Every small business like Burchworth starts in a garage, starts in a small place, but when they expand, they don't turn the whole neighborhood into a garage, they move into a larger place. You can, anyone can look in LoopNet, there are so many places available, 10 acres, 20 acres, without bothering the neighbors. They can set up a facility. None of the old people, especially Alzheimer's people, they are looking for the nearest available facility or hospital. They're not driving back to their house. It's just beyond me. I am an engineer, I have a management degree to understand basics of business. You do not buy a property, two houses, the neighbors, they don't have any choices, they sold the place to Care One facility, and they have to move on. We don't have, maybe it will happen to us, the whole neighborhood will become Care One. They buy it in 2008, wait 10 years, if they have a need, they would have started in 2008, 2009. Why did they wait 10 years? They have absolutely no regard, no respect for the neighbors. In my opinion, this petition should be denied, not just this petition. The earlier approval of Care One in 2001 or 2002, whenever happened, it should be taken upon, and the whole facility should be removed from its existing place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next person within 200 feet?
Sir, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record and provide your address.
My name is Sanjay, S-A-N-J-A-Y, and the last name is Amin, A-M-I-N, and my address is 1368 Inman Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, 0820. I am the next door neighbor of Care One facility. So I have a question to ask. Can I ask them something, or...
Yes, but I want to get on record, I assume that you agree with everything that has been said before you?
Yeah, I'm, yes, I, first, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with what Elaine and Ron said, and the thing, the irony of the whole thing is, Care One very well knows that if you were to give them approval, they will comply to everything, because if history tells them anything, that hey, let's comply to everything, and then there is no enforcement from township, and that is what basically relates to all this. If there was enforcement from township, I think they would have helped us and take some steps and basically prevent what has happened to all of us. So if history tells us anything, I'm repeating myself, they will comply to everything you say and basically do the same thing, because fundamentally, we all know that nature and human doesn't change, that their behavior will remain, and they will do whatever to basically fill their pocket going forward. But I'm, so, yes, I absolutely agree with what they said. So I really want to focus on the generator. So I heard that you have a 1,500 kilowatt generator, is that correct? Yes, I think, I think a lot of people. And then you basically said that you, okay, I'm going to give you some time to discuss. You want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Yeah, and you said that you have to keep four days' worth of fuel into the tank, right? So you presented a lot of... So you presented a lot of data through Google, so I also did some research on Google, because you kept on saying lots of Google reference. So 1,500 kilowatt generator takes 106 gallons per hour a, as a fuel. And if you calculate four days' worth of fuel, that, that comes out to be roughly more than 10,000 gallons in that tank. Highly flammable, and if you look at the distance, it will be roughly 60 to 70 feet from the kitchen window of the next door neighbor. Okay? So now, th- these are commercial facility, and, and the whole, whole thing is basically they are commercial-grade fire, fire extinguisher and everything. The residential does not have those things. So, and, and the Murphy's Law says that if something is bad going to happen, it will happen once. And I think, look at the, look at the poor neighbors, if, if basically they are faced with 10,000 gallons of highly flammable fluid, who wants in their backyard 10,000 gallons? Even, forget about 60 feet, I don't even want 200 feet from my, my, my kitchen window. That is correct assumption, 10,000 gallons i- is what you are going to keep in the tank? Yeah, I mean, if, if Google says that, that's what it comes out to.
Okay, I'm gonna just, wait, hold on, hold on. I'm just gonna again clarify for the record that internet searches are not a part of this discussion, unless you have an expertise and are qualified in generators. Please let me finish.
No, I'm, I'm not saying anything.
Yeah, we cannot, we cannot as a board have that as a part of your consideration. If that factors into any determination you make, it will instantly be remanded. So let's move on.
Well, I thought, I thought it would be the fair thing, because I think number of times when they were presenting the stuff, they basically mentioned Google.
And we said the same thing to their information. Again, we don't want to face a situation that a decision is made and an appeal, the record is unclear, the board is not permitted to consider the internet searches.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't hear it, but I think I, I just followed their, their philosophy. When they were saying Google, 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 I said that may be the fair game. Okay, the second thing I really want to notice is, I, first of all, I really want to thank the township engineer. I'm gonna quote one thing he said.
Uh-oh, Frank, Hank.
So, I, I basically call this, I, I don't, I don't call this CareOne facility, I call that monstrosity. And, and the township engineer basically said that you are building a mountain in somebody's backyard. Now, this is a 48-foot facility, but if you look at from the, from the, from the backyard of somebody, it is going to be 60 feet, because the way elevation has worked out. So think about 60-foot facility, 60-foot-high facility, 70 feet away from your house. I mean, is that what you want? You all are resident. I really sincerely urge you to basically deny this application. They don't belong in the, they, they have made our life miserable as it is. And, and by having all this monst- monstrosity, it is not going to help us any, at all. And, and all the data they presented, I mean, the data is something you can manipulate whichever you want, in favor of you or against you. So I live in this facility since 2004, and I have seen the traffic in this thing. Now, if they, their traffic experts comes and say that building this 90,000-square-foot building, 90 parking facilities, they are not going to impact the traffic, you have to be out of your mind to believe that fact. I, I, I'm not gonna basically argue with them, but these are, these are wrong fact, that, that they are not going to impact the traffic at all. Anybody who knows the Inman Avenue even little, even they have traveled through that, through that road, very tiny two-lane road, it always, the traffic always get built up all the way to Lewis Court from Reddington Road. And then, there are like during the rush hour and during the school time, and when the train basically pass by, that basically becomes even worse. So I hope you consider all this data, you do your, your research, you do your analysis, and basically think about the resident, how miserable their life is going to be if, if this facility basically come to place and start working in, in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, the next person within 200 feet, please.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for the record and provide us with your address.
My name is Geeta Sundrani. It's G-E-E-T-A, last name S-U-N-D-R-A-N-I. I live on 8 Lewis Court, Edison, New Jersey. I agree with everyone that's been here, and I would appreciate if this petition gets denied. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next one within 200 feet, please.
My name is Robert Vitaglano.
Hold on, hold on. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And would you please state your full name for the record and provide us with your address?
My name is Robert Vitaglano. I'm here with my mother-in-law, who lives at 1320 Inman Avenue, which is-
Okay, she's gonna be sworn in separately, just one at a time. Let's have you talk first.
I'm speaking on behalf of her.
Oh, you're speaking, are you?
She-
Okay. And why is that?
Language barrier.
Oh.
Just to make sure that everybody understands.
One minute.
Okay.
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 All right, so, so is she going to be speaking to you and you're gonna say, or you're just gonna talk on her back?
I'm gonna speak, and then, then we're done.
Okay, so again, I'm sorry, your last name, I didn't catch it.
My last name is Vitaglano Vizinvita, I-T-A-G-L-I-A-N-O. Her name is Teresa Caruso. She's the homeowner of 1320 Inman Avenue.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, sir.
We agree. We would like this to be denied. There's multiple reasons, obviously. I think it's common sense. I think we all think it's common sense. Someone wants to put a dumpster in your backyard, attract all kinds of animals, would you want that in your backyard? Somebody wants to put a generator with diesel fuel on your property line, 10 feet away is not enough. Would you want that in your backyard? My mother-in-law lived there for however long. She never wants to leave, she says that's her paradise, and now they want to disrupt it. Not fair. Not fair to the people that can't do stuff for themselves. Taking advantage of people that can't move, people that don't want to move. I ask you to deny it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, next person within 200 feet? Anyone else within 200 feet of the property? No one else? Okay, I'll go to outside of 200 feet of the property. Anyone outside of 200 feet of the property? Come on up, sir.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please state your full name for the record and provide us with your address.
Yeah. My name is Dong Sen Ping, P-I-N-G, my last name. I'm on the 71 Webb Street. Yeah, I fully support all the, they're saying, for me, you know, I go there every day through the Inman Avenue, so I do know the traffic is so bad, so I wish the board will deny that application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, anyone outside of two, anyone else outside of 200 feet of the property wanting to be heard?
Sir, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, provide us with your address.
Sure. My name is Neil Jarrett. My address is 1 Lewis Court in Edison, New Jersey. Okay, first of all, I wanted to start off by saying I agree with what everybody has said against CareOne, the CareOne facility, and I hope that you will deny that, this Okay. So throughout this process, you've seen two sides to this, basically a for-profit petitioner who's, has considerable resources, trying to push forth this project, and you have the neighbors who are trying to do whatever they can in objection to this project. Some of you have asked questions with respect to this, others have not, but all of you have observed everything that has been going on, and have a lot of data and facts to sort through as you make your decision. If this was almost any other type of commercial enterprise, the law is very clear. It would have, it would be a clear matter of, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It would be a clear situation of being rejected out of hand, because a facility, because only certain types of, of, of facilities can be built in, in this, particularly single-family homes, places of religious worship, private schools, and I believe golf courses of 100 acres. This obviously does not conform to any of that. But, but this situation is not simple because of certain other concerns with respect to the law. I believe the petitioner had mentioned something about the CICA test, and in there, I want to specifically emphasize that the petitioner has an obligation to show that it does not, that it satisfies the burden of not causing significant harm to local residents. And it, in, in my opinion, it clearly fails that test. For the, for the purposes of satisfying the negative criteria part of that test, the petitioner must, and I quote from the New Jersey Zoning and Land Use Administration, 2019 edition, "It must prove that it would not create a substantial detriment to the public or substantial impairment of intent and purpose of the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance. By restoring this balance, municipalities will again be able to evaluate proposed use on a particular site to ensure that it does not have a negative impact on the overall zoning plan of the community." Close quote. The petitioner has failed to make its case, and with respect to this part of the test, and so their petition should be denied. The lawmakers of the Township of Edison understood, understand the importance of property law and ordinances, so its people can enjoy their property without interference. As a result, they passed ordinances, like the one I mentioned earlier, to safeguard property owners' rights. Particularly subsection, Chapter 37, Subsection 1.2 specifically states that the zoning ordinances purposes are intended to, and I quote, "avoid undue concentration of population by regulating and limiting, and limiting the use of land, the height and bulk of buildings, and to conserve the value of property and encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the township." With all of this in mind, consider the petitioner, considering that the petitioner wants to build a three-story, 90,000-square-foot facility with almost 200 parking spaces, I don't think that meets that criterion. This will cause the neighboring property values to fall at least 10%, probably more. In addition, per the notice, this 106-bed will have a large concentration of people, and furthermore, per the Edison Township Master Plan, the Inman Avenue is classified as a minor artery. It will also cause a significant burden, this facility will cause a significant burden on local traffic. The petitioner's plans are in complete contradiction to the existing zoning laws. In short, no person or entity is above the law. I understand the petitioner's desire to expand. They appear to be a successful business, and they want to increase its local capacity. I get that, but just because, and however, the petitioner should not be permitted to proceed with reckless disregard for the substantial detrimental impact and disregard for the master plan of the Edison Township. There are plenty of other alternate sites that are more appropriate for a facility like this. It could have, easily have bought a variety of other properties and, that were more suitable for its particular purpose. In addition to the ordinance itself, other facts should be also considered. For example, the number of facilities, as Mr. Britt had mentioned earlier, the, the five-mile analysis is a rather flawed approach, and the way that they worded it was very carefully worded to say, within Edison, obviously, you don't hit a wall at the end of Edison, and you can't go to another facility there. So that analysis is faulty, and I hope you take that, I hope you consider that aspect. The only reason to use such an assumption is to skew an analysis in the petitioner's favor. Please see the argument for what it is, faulty. The petitioner's representatives have stated that the cars traveling to and from the new facility would have a minimum, minimal impact on surrounding traffic. I believe their experts testified that there would be roughly one car every two minutes entering or exiting the facility. It is important to note that during peak times, traffic can easily back up past Lewis Court, which is approximately half a mile from the Old Reddington and Inman Avenue intersection. The added traffic would, doesn't sound like much, but it is, it will worsen traffic that is already clogged during peak travel times. Speaking of traffic, there's also the curve in the road that is in front of 1340, approximately, Inman Avenue. It is impossible to see oncoming traffic when traveling along Inman and approaching that bend in the road. As I recall, the petitioner wanted to make an entrance or exit, entrance/exit in that area. Without considering safety precautions, that would be a very dangerous place to make a new ingress/egress point for vehicles, because you cannot see oncoming traffic. I'm aware of at least two accidents at the Inman Avenue Lewis Court intersection over the past 20 years. There were probably more, but I know of at least two, and one of them, one of those accidents caused thousands of dollars of damage to 1 Lewis Court. Okay. During the July 30th, 2019 zoning board meeting, the petitioner's expert, so-called, tried to convince you that there would be no significant impact on local housing prices. The example he attempted to use were ridiculous, as I believe a member of the zoning board had mentioned, and... But I, I have an example of my own I could put forth. Due to the ongoing petitioner's efforts, it has become known that the, the plan for, the petitioner's plan, and 5 Lewis Court actually was sold during this process. And I believe it was originally listed for $945,000.
I would object.
I'm gonna...
He's testifying about a property which is not his property regarding what he understands may or may not have been an impact that could or could not have been related to this application regarding a list price versus a sale price.
Just so the board is aware, you've had already testimony from two people as to valuation, and that's the testimony that has to be considered. So any other net opinions cannot be addressed. If you do use that net opinion as a part of any decision, we will again face a problem. Sorry.
Okay, so I can't, okay. Well, okay, so, having such a facility built there and not affect property values is a ridiculous notion. It will affect property values. Most, and I also want you to remember this, most Americans rely on the value of their home to help fund their retirement. So people would work 30 years, 40 years of their life, and, you know, 10% doesn't sound like much, but when you think about it in terms of blood, blood, sweat, and tears of your neighbors, that's a couple of years of their life basically rendered meaningless. I want you to think about that. And during the winter months, I believe Mr. Bagnell had mentioned, brought up this issue, a question was raised about the effectiveness of plantings to act as a buffer and a barrier between the petitioner's property and local neighbors. between the petitioner's property and local neighbors. In particular, a concern was raised regarding the lack of leaves during the winter months. So the building would be visible, and any noise dampening effect would be gone. While the petitioner's representative provided an answer, he seemed to be just guessing and speculating about it. His response was, I felt, was insufficient, and the buffering to be merely, to barely add more trees to resolve the problem. I don't think that trees are going to act as a sufficient barrier in that kind of a situation. Unfortunately, local residents have, we've all had to face this issue ourselves firsthand. Mrs. Britt had mentioned that earlier, and we've heard testimony and statements about In the last few years alone, we have had some severe weather in the form of heavy rain and snow that have knocked down trees. Even if those trees were sufficient, storms can knock down trees in the future. At best, the petitioner will have to replace those trees, assuming that they actually choose to do so. And, you know, at worst, one of those trees could end up falling on our property, given the height difference in that respect. And even if it doesn't fall on somebody's home or something, then what guarantee do we have that they'll actually replace it? They haven't done it in the past. In the past, the petitioner planted trees along the property line. However, those trees fell over, and neighbors have stated that they've had to, at their own expense, they've had to remove them and clean up the mess that the petitioner's trees had made. Despite all of this, the petitioner decided to label local neighbors as alleged vandals who tore down their trees with malicious intent on multiple occasions. If the petitioner behaves like, with this level of disdain and contempt for the local population, for their neighbors now, how do you think they're going to behave afterwards? If we have a problem with them not, with one of their trees falling on our property or not replacing trees in the future? With respect to the generator that they want to place, you know, I'm not an expert, but I believe it was said in the previous testimony that, by the petitioner, that for such a large-sized generator, they would need, I believe another resident had tested, had stated correctly that a 1.5-megawatt generator would require so many, so much fuel. Having any kind of fuel of that magnitude for a generator of that size is, I wouldn't want to live next to it. It's a fire hazard. It's, it's, it'll, just the generator running will generate air and noise pollution. We, there are children who live in the area. It'll affect them, it'll affect, it'll affect the elderly, it'll affect everybody. A few months ago, I recall that the power had went out, and I was sitting in my office, in my home office, and I heard this low hum. Since I couldn't do anything, I, my curiosity got the best of me, so I went outside to look around, and I heard it was a neighbor's generator, and that was a 22-kilowatt-hour generator. Imagine what a 1.5-kilowatt-hour generator, what kind of noise that will make. Honored Board members, the decision-making process for this case comes down to one of two paths, but the destination should be the same. Path one, if it doesn't qualify under the CECA test, then the petitioner's proposal should be summarily denied because of existing zoning ordinances. Path two, if it does, the petitioner has failed to meet its case with respect to the negative criteria part of the test, and the petitioner's proposal should also be denied there, too. The petitioner's plan will have a detrimental impact on the master plan for the township of Edison. It will harm the quality of life for local residences, for residents, local residents. In addition, it will cause a significant deterioration in local property values. Furthermore, it will negatively impact local traffic, cause, increase air, noise, and light pollution, and the petitioner is trying to use land zone as RA to fulfill a purpose for which it was never intended. These zoning board meetings have served as a crucible to burn away irrelevancies until we have reached the truth. You have heard what both sides have said, and I ask, and I ask you to see this for what it is: a profit-seeking entity looking to maximize profits regardless of the negative impact it has on local residences. I have been a resident of Edison, New Jersey, for my entire life. All of these Edison residents behind me have selected Edison, New Jersey, to make as a home for themselves because they thought Edison Township will protect their rights as residents. I ask you to prove them right. I ask you to uphold the law. I ask you to do what the law was meant to do, to protect the residents of the great town of Edison. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else outside of 200 feet of the property?
Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
My name, first name, Svanil, S-V-A-P-N-I-L, last name Patel.
Address?
Oh, address, 7 Julie Drive.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right. I agree with everything that has been said over here, certainly 100%. I definitely agree with the negative impact it will have should the application go ahead. Also, living close to a school, and which is very, in a close proximity to the Care One facility, I don't think, I personally don't believe it's a good idea to have expansion like this. And therefore, I hope that the board comes to consensus that this is not, the application should be denied, certainly.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else outside of 200 feet of the property?
Those that have stood up to talk, you can just line up.
Yeah, you can stay there.
Yeah, that's fine. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, please state your full name for the record and provide your address.
Chirali Patel, 6 Lewis Court, Edison, New Jersey. I just wanted to clarify that there is a tree, I live on 6 Lewis Court, right behind the Care One facility. There was trees between us and Care One.
First thing, you do agree with everything else that has been said before?
I definitely do.
Okay, fine, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, those trees were removed due to the damage caused by the snowstorm back in 2018. It was not vandalism or anything. We waited about a week or so. Nobody was there to take care of those trees. Then we called Edison Township. They said, "Just go to the house whose trees were down." We went there, nobody was there. House was completely abandoned, there was nobody there, it was like windows was broken down and everything. So we finally realized that no one's gonna take care of those trees. So our neighbor got together, and we took care of those trees. Care One was not there in 2018 to take care of those trees. We had to take the money out of our pocket. That's all I wanted to say. So therefore, I just wanted to let you guys know, please, not this facility go along with this project. Please deny it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person, come on up, please.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
My name is Mina Jarrett, and I live at 1 Lewis Court. I just wanted to say that I agree with everybody who have spoken before me against Care One's petition, and I hope the zoning board will, will, in the interest of the Edison residents, will deny this application. It's an outrageous application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, ma'am.
Sir, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Ann Jamison, 1 Irene Court, Edison.
What would you like to tell us, sir?
Well, I guess I really need to, very much at the outside, at the outlet, I agree with everything I've heard. We have been at other meetings, listening to the people who are asking for the variance. This is the first time we've heard from our neighbors, and I really feel for some of them. I'm not a neighbor to the facility, but we do go have a lot of egress by it. Anyways, the thing that I want to present to the board, if I thought, is that the intersection of Inman, Raritan, and Maple, I say both, all three, because they, they've destroyed two different roads meet there, I don't know if you know that or not. One is Raritan coming from Scotch Plains, Maple going to South Plainfield. That intersection has never been controlled. I've been here for 35 years. It has gone from very bad to, to me, very dangerous. When I think about the facility, I think about the traffic flow that's there now. When they talk about people coming to visit and people who are working there, that's a lot of traffic. You add to that the current flow of transport vehicles and emergency ambulances on a constant 24-hour basis, it is busy. Now, I'm, in my mind anyways, I am not a, by the way, I'm a corporate manager, long-retired, 10, 15 years, but I do understand the corporate mandates and the corporate efforts very well. But what I do see is this expansion adding to what I just talked about. The people visiting, and people visiting, and is this wrong?
Okay.
And, and the people who will need to be transported, and the emergency vehicles, all of that expanding. I have not heard that being mentioned. Now, I do remember from the public, other public meetings, Edison Police have been, I forget who was presenting that as evidence, had given an okay to a, that being problematic, any traffic increases. I didn't, I can't remember all the details of that reference, but it was presented by, I believe, the petitioners for the variance. I, I have full respect for the Edison Police, but the things I'm bringing up now, I'd like the zoning board to be thinking about. This is county issues. It probably takes a long time to get those kind of things corrected and expanded. I see this as a citizen, as being extremely problematic. I thank you for, for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Next person, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
William Jenkins, J-E-N-K-I-N-S, 1295 Inman Avenue. Actually represent the World Law-Hart Church School on behalf of the headmaster, who is at a medical procedure. I'm speaking on behalf of the safety of children and with regard to traffic and some of the observations I've had in my 15 years working there. The troublesome intersections, I don't need to repeat, but I think you all need to have a better example and to see what's going on, aside from, I think, what the traffic engineer was showing at maybe 10:00 AM. 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM is a very heavy traffic time for our school, three blocks away, the Martin Luther King School. You have school buses, parents dropping off, parents picking up. 2:45 to 3:30, another busy time. That's then parallels with the 4:30 to 6 o'clock pickup times after games, athletic practices, other after-school activities. The amount of traffic, if they're saying it's a half a mile backup, I'll tell you it's more than that. There are several times then when you need to turn east going down Inman Avenue to avoid going west to get up toward Inman and Raritan. That gets you down to the other intersection at Tingly. We could be here all night talking about the dangerous intersection there. Accidents are numerous. The westbound left turn into the school is already slowed. Even with the expanded roadway and the turn lanes, there continue to be issues on Inman Avenue. While the eastbound traffic turning right into the school, the number of impatient drivers, and that goes back to this curve that everyone's talking about. I drive to work every day, not looking to be a hero here, because we've all got late nights. I pull in every day, 6:40 AM. That's not a busy time to all you people. I can't tell you the number of people because of that curve going slow, then I've got about 300 feet, I'm turning right into the school. The number of people that are passing me on my left at 30 and 40 miles an hour, that continues through these pickup and drop-off times that I'm talking about. That curve, and if you're talking about, that curve is where this new intersection is going to be in the entrance and exit point. I don't know if you all do field trips. You have got to experience this. You have got to see what we're talking about. It is a very, very serious situation. There's no question for that needed this kind of facility. No one's arguing that. I have an identical twin brother that is suffering early Alzheimer's right now, and he's my best friend, and I used to be able to talk to him three times a day. He can't even pick up a cellphone anymore. He's not even 60 years old. So I understand what you all are doing and why it exists, but I'm telling you, that property is not the property for such an expansion. Therefore, I agree with the previous speakers in front of me, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Sylvia Davis, also at 1295 Inman Avenue. I'm the head of Lower School at the World Law-Hart Church School. To continue, we agree with all of these comments. I, as the head of Lower School, and I'm in charge of three-year-olds through fifth grade, so it would be 11-year-olds, we have three-year-olds who are as well dropped off in that, in our drop-off in the front. I stand outside most days, probably four to five days a week outside during that time period that Mr. Jenkins referred to, and the traffic is, is very, cars are usually stopped in front of our school. There are many other things that we wanted to say that connect with that. However, just yesterday morning, I live in Mettuchen, I, as he was referring to about the intersection on Tingly and Inman, I actually do not come down there because I cannot turn left due to all of the traffic coming from Inman on the other side heading towards, like, Plainfield Country Club and heading towards Care One. So I, every morning instead, will turn on, turn around the fire station, I go around back behind Woodland Avenue, I come around Plainfield Country Club, so I may then try to make a right because I can't make a left easily. I also come early, I come to work around 7 o'clock in the morning. Just yesterday, I was coming around this curve everyone was referring to, which also, during daylight saving, has a very difficult sun glare, and I was almost hit head-on because there was a police officer and there was an ambulance turning into Care One right around that curve, and a truck decided to go around on the left to get out of the way, and I very nearly, just yesterday morning, and texted Mr. Jenkins, I was almost just hit head-on because there's also nowhere to go. If you were that car trying to get out of the way, there's, the golf course is right there, and there's nowhere for you to go to get out of the way. It's a very, very heavily trafficked area, as he said, that we have not just our school, but there's another school very close there, and that actually extends the hours because Martin Luther King is a public school, and they dismiss later than we do, and they drop off in the morning later than we do. So this actually extends that heavy traffic time from probably around 7:30 in the morning till about 9:15, and then the pickup time is ours begins around 3, 2:45 for my youngest children in my, in my care, through to about 4:30. So in addition to all of those reasons, my own personal reason, my experience just yesterday morning, we agree with all of these comments.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening.
Do you solemnly swear?
Yes, I do swear.
Hold on. A little too soon. A little too soon. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, thank you very much.
Please state, please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Meher Wan Joshi, I live, I live-
Hold on, hold on. I was talking at the same time you were. Let's try that again. Go ahead.
M.E.H.E.R.W.A.N., last name J.O.S.H.I., and I live at 715 Old Raritan Road, which is basically the first house at the intersection of Old Raritan Road and Inman Avenue. So I'll start by agreeing completely with everybody. I wanted to ask a question. What is a variance? I'm not a lawyer, and I'm sure you guys know about this much better than me, but I believe a variance is something that should help the majority of the local people and hurt a minority of the local people. A variance should take into consideration whether there is a local need for people in this area. Most, most variances should consider that, and I'm sure you will understand that too. If it is hurting a majority and helping a minority to none, then I don't know where the logic goes in this variance. Finally, I completely agree with what Bill Jenkins said, and my kids go to Wardlow, and I can tell you this, this traffic situation that was brought up makes no sense. Now, why I was concerned sitting back there and listening was that when the expert was giving the witness, and when the public was unrested with that, I do believe you said, "Hold off, you will get your chance to speak." I believe that's what was said, and that's why I see these people bringing up the points which I did not see this committee arguing with those experts. I did not see the committee asking them, "How did you come up with this diagnostic? How did you say that this is the necessity in this five-mile radius? Where was the center point?" These points are being brought up because we saw a lack of a response, and I'm talking just as a layperson sitting at the back. Similarly, when it came to the traffic situation, there was no question, how did you come up with these statistics? Did you look into what happens in school hours? Did you look into what happens when the train goes? What happens when there's an ambulance parked there? Did we ever consider what happens if there's a code red, there's a fire alert at this new facility, and the entire road will get blocked? I have got my house right at the end of Inman Avenue. When the Inman Avenue is packed, twice I've had, once was a carbon monoxide alert, once was a false break-in alert. I am rushing to get home. I can tell you, there is no way for me to reach home with a carbon monoxide alert with the amount of traffic there is at the end of Inman Avenue. If I can't get home, how are the first aid people, whoever is going to come in, be able to get there? This is really a problem with people's security. This really should not, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer, but I'm sure there's a lot more things to be considered for you. So I would strongly recommend that we do not consider this facility. I think this facility can be brought up in an area that does not hurt its surroundings in a much more harmonious way. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else outside of 200 feet of the property? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record, providing your, hold, hold on. Full name for the record, providing your address.
Elizabeth Conway, 20, Netherwood Circle. I live down the road on Inman Avenue, and I truly feel for the people that have been here. I've been coming to these meetings-
First of all, you agree with everything that has-
Absolutely, because I would not want to be their neighbor, to be very honest with you, because of what they have been going through. I've been attending these meetings for quite a long time, and I understand what they're going through. And as I drive by, I go that direction a couple of times a day, and the, as we go to more and more meetings, I become more and more aware of what the problem could possibly be, because there is a problem already on Inman Avenue. I know Inman to be a county road, and at that point of Inman Avenue, it even gets more narrow than Inman Avenue is where I am further down on Inman Avenue closer to Colonia. And my question to the board is actually, I've never heard anything definitive as to the petitioner going to the county to see what their responsibility would be to the road itself, if they have any kind of responsibility, because there are times now when the facility is smaller, I do see cars overloading the, the initial parking lot now on the grass and right on the edge of Inman Avenue, and I can only imagine what could happen once it expands. And that very powerful road curve that everyone is talking to is a big item that should be thought of, and I invite the board to go on a night like tonight, down that road, and see what it's like, because I've actually experienced going around that curve in bad weather with the hope that there's nobody coming around at the other end. And if we're adding more people as visitors, more people as workers, and more people as vendors entering and exiting at all times of the day, this is something that the board should strongly consider that is just not appropriate for this area. And I know the old saying, "Not in my neighborhood," but this is just not the right neighborhood for this to join. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please state your full name for the record and provide us with your address. You may have to lift that microphone, it's hard to hear you.
Just a little. My name is-
Can I borrow a couple of inches?
You should have asked people before they replace the name. My name is Glenn Small, that's two N's. I live at 257 West Grant Avenue. For the record, I'm a professional engineer.
Thank you.
Not here in, for the record. And I, I understand NIMBY, not in my backyard, okay? And if Care 1 is a bad, as bad of a neighbor as the people, the nearby residents have said, they're not going to be any better of a neighbor in the future, regardless of whether this, the variance application gets approved or denied, okay? If they're a bad neighbor now, they'll be a bad neighbor then. So don't expect anything better, okay? I'm just realistic. Now, the reason I want, I want, I want to talk about this is, I, I have both financial and medical power of attorney for my octogenarian mother, okay? For, she lived in an assisted living facility in Monmouth County, much distant from Edison, and quite honestly, when she was able to go there, she only needed a little bit of assistance. After about two years, they could not help her, because in assisted living, all they do is help you with any of six acts of daily living. And if you don't know what those acts are, are dressing, feeding, transferring, bathroom, showering, hygiene. So that's what an assisted living does, okay? My mother has two incurable diseases that are debilitating. She has both diabetes and Parkinson's, okay? She has lost her ability to walk or feed herself, and right now, the dementia portion of Parkinson's is on the onset. So about half the time, she, she knows my name, so, but I can live with that. I understand what the disease does and how it's debilitating. So the question is, is there really a need for an assisted living or memory care facility in this area? I'll say yes. Now, I'm not going to talk to whether this is the right, this is the right location for it or not, but this area is underserved, and I know that from when I was looking for an assisted living facility for my mother, okay? Let the record show, my mother is out of assisted living, she's in full-term, long-term care, she is at Care 1, and I have my opinions about Care 1, so that's another story. But that's because I, I'm responsible for both her financial and her medical going forward, okay? So there isn't, there really is a need. Now, people have conjecture about the traffic on Inman Avenue, okay? Inman Avenue is bad, Middlesex County has failed the residents of Edison by not addressing Inman Avenue. Okay, the traffic, there is probably more traffic on that road than the road was designed for. There's a couple of intersections that require control. The Tingly Rowway Avenue kind of dogleg, needs some control, and there needs control at the end of Inman Avenue at Old Raritan, because people don't know how to use a stop sign, they don't know how to use a turn signal, and they just don't know what they do, they get flummoxed. Now, I don't know, I didn't do traffic studies, I'm sure they did, and I don't know how many cars additionally this facility is going to bring. It'll, you'll have a certain number of residents who, as they arrive at an assisted living facility, will be driving, okay? Don't think they won't, they all don't drive, they will be driving, okay? And you have a staff, because you'll have an increased staff if this gets approved. Now, the, the problem that I see is right now, their facility is deficient for parking, it's not been maintained, and I think it's because they've been waiting so long on this application, okay? And that's just my gut feeling, okay? Because there, because there are too many cars there currently for the use of that building. There are. They park on the grass, I parked on the grass. I don't care. Hey, I got to park. So, and they, quite honestly, since my mother's been there, there's been a turnover in management of that facility, so there hasn't been a very good continuity, except for the medical staff, and I can't say anything bad about them, so I'm not. But you have to ask yourself, if you have a relative or a loved one, and they need to be helped to have a good quality of life, do you want to schlep a half hour to an hour to a place where they can be at, or would you rather them be near your backyard, okay? And you really got to think of it, because when I had a schlep to Monmouth County many a time because of hospitalizations and then you can't find out things, it's not the nicest thing, it gets the alerts, you know? I still have the phone set for if I get a call from, from there, I'm like, are we going to the hospital or not? So you have to ask yourself, when someone needs it, and hopefully nobody here needs to have this, and I, hopefully it's not me, but if you really need care because you've got Alzheimer's or dementia's coming in, or you just need some help dressing or feeding yourself, you know, do you want to be far away from your loved ones, or do you want to be near your loved ones? That's all I have to say. You know, I do understand the people, the nearby residents. I understand they may not be a good neighbor. I understand it's noisy, the generator, some of the numbers that were said are just poppy cock, but it's up to the board to make a decision. I can live with it either way, because it's really not affecting me, because my, my loved one is already in the facility as a long-term care. She's never going to leave because she can't walk anymore, and she can't take care of herself. So that facility does me a very good, because I can be there in five minutes, and I pop in and surprise them, and they don't like that.
We won't say anymore about that.
But they're not, but it's a good thing, because that's the only way you see care, because my mother can't even, she can't even make a decision for herself, and I've told them, you have to make believe that you're dealing with a child, because any care that she gets has to go through my approval, because she can't make an informed decision at this point in her life.
Okay.
Okay?
We appreciate your input, sir. Thank you so much. Is there someone behind you? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record, providing your address.
Gary Chesson, 11 Gentry Court. I agree with everyone except for the last person that spoke. So, okay, there's, there's a bunch of things. First of all, the traffic on Inman is a disaster. We all know it. You added a facility of this size, you can add more, but there's added problems. You have a train that's going to block off Inman Avenue. It drops, it blocks off Inman directly, and then by MLK, a little further down. So now you have an area that's, that the Edison Police can't get to. Now you have all these additional cars that are going to come into that area. You've completely isolated that, that part of the town. So I think you would need to then have emergency people there, police there, and so on. You're, you're creating a danger that's, that's unbelievable, way beyond the, the traffic, in my opinion. In terms of the, what's happening, Care 1 is, is obviously a bad organization, in my opinion, and that is my opinion. But when someone applies for a variance, you would expect they would behave themselves, and they're not behaving themselves. Now, I, fortunately, and I feel bad for the other people, don't butt up against them, but I do see the fact that cars are parked on the grass on, on Inman Avenue all the time. There's no policing going on, I never see any cars removed. So if Care 1 was a good organization, you would think that they would then take care of it, especially during a variance, but they don't. The other thing is, you know, with regard to this traffic, and, and the cutoff of, of Inman Avenue with, because of the railroad, you're going to add cars, and even when the train gets through, the first aid people aren't going to be able to get to where they need to get to. And I think it's a major issue for that. I completely hope that you deny this. And in addition to that, I hope that somebody listens to some of this testimony and then addresses that with Care 1, way beyond the variance, is my personal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else outside of 200 feet of the property? Last call. Okay, there being none, I'll close the case. We now go, no, we go to Mr. Gazarovski first. Okay, Mr. Gazarovski, you are first for summation, if you'd like, sir.
Madam Chairlady, members of the board, members of the public, I, of course, have been retained, as was earlier pointed out, by individuals who reside in that area to represent him in objecting to this particular application. I think the first thing which I must say, and I know that you're all aware of it, this is in fact an application for a use variance. I'm sure this board has heard many applications for use variances, and you're well aware of the standards which have been established by the various cases, as well as the municipal land use law. I would also say that from my perspective, and I've been doing this for a long time, this has been a unique hearing, and frankly, what I witnessed this evening, this can in fact be a seminar on how an application for a use variance should be considered. And Madam Chairlady, I know that the chair and I have, on some instances, had differences of opinion, but I want to commend you for the way in which you handled this particular evening for this reason.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I have never before been at a hearing, and as has been pointed out, and I've been doing it for probably close to 50 years, where I witnessed the chair- doing it for probably close to 50 years, where I witnessed the Chair, as well as the members of the Board, take the time to listen to the residents and citizens of your community who are most affected by this application. I know that, in some instances this evening, some of that testimony perhaps has been tedious. Sometimes it's been repetitive. But most importantly, it has always been emotional, and it's always been from the heart. I think the most important thing about this particular application is that this property is, in fact, zoned residential. And we all know that the governing body is the legislative body of your community. If they had wanted it to be zoned otherwise, they could have done so. They didn't do it as a result of the master plan, they didn't do it as a result of the reexamination, they didn't do it because they realized that it should remain residential for a variety of reasons. There was, in fact, a small facility which has been there for a number of years, and in listening to the testimony of the residents, we can see how that has worked out, and even in its limited scale, what impact it has had upon the surrounding area. Now, whoever constructed the residential homes on Lewis Avenue and the other, they had to be aware of the fact that the adjacent property, the subject property, was zoned residential. All of the individuals who have come forward this evening, when they purchased their homes, when they were constructed, and you could certainly see, many of them are articulate residents who appreciate the fact that when they purchased their home, it was adjacent to an area of land that was zoned residential. If, in fact, there were two abandoned houses there, it was still residential. So, anyone coming in and seeking to expand this facility would have to come before you for a use variance. And everyone is well aware of the standard of proof, and the CECA test, and all of those other things, but this is also a human thing. You know, you always have, it's always been interesting to me, and I'm a participant in it, but whoever is seeking an application to be approved has a bevy of experts. Whoever is opposing that particular application, they also have a bevy of experts. But I have to say, this is one of the few times, if, the only time where I've seen this Board take the time and the patience to listen to the people who are most affected by it. And I have to say that I truly was affected by it, by a variety of things. I think that this hearing this evening is really, truly reflective of what America's about. It's about residents who serve their community, residents who are interested in their community, raising children, taking care of their property, preserving their property values, coming here night after night for perhaps 16 or 17 occasions, and putting together their thoughts and expressing them to you. And I believe, from listening to comments that you are, in fact, listening to, then, I think you certainly are well aware of the responsibilities that you have, and that what decision you will make will impact them. Impact those 20 houses or so that live adjacent to this residentially zoned property. Listen to the proofs put forth by the adjacent now landowner, who wants to take what your governing body has deemed should be zone residential, is zone residential, and seek to expand their facility, and it's not just a simple situation where they're saying, okay, fine. We know there's adjacent residential properties located next door. We're gonna minimize the size of this building. We're gonna make it compatible and not incompatible with the adjacent residential use. You've listened to the comment of the public, as to Mr. Bignell's comment. They're building Inman Street. Why are they? They're exceeding the height, they're exceeding the parking. We can see in their past performance how they handle that. No one can really explain why or understand how, in the evening hours, in these adjacent residential homes with this giant building which is up there, the amount of light intrusion which can have upon their life. I truly believe you are a deliberative body. You may not vote in my favor. I, I think you've listened. I think you've considered it. In whichever way you do vote, obviously, both of us have the opportunity to seek relief. And of course, I know that I will. I have confidence in your opinion, and I shall wait to see your deliberative process take place. And I thank you for your patience with me over these many meetings. And this truly was a unique part of my practice in my life to witness what took place this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gazarovski. Myself and my Board, we appreciate your comments.
I'm also gonna ask, if you would, to clarify the variances for the skilled facility and differentiate with the assisted living, as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
This is an application that seeks approval of a 106-bed assisted living facility to contain 36 assisted living beds, 70 beds for the care of those who suffer from Alzheimer's or other dementia. The application also seeks approval for some minor modifications on the skilled nursing facility site previously listed, most importantly, the addition of parking to meet the township's ordinance requirement. And I'll come back to that at the end of this, in terms of differentiating between the two. So, Care One additionally, as the Board is aware, intends to merge the lots that are the subject of this application, for which pursuant to the municipal land use law, your ordinances, the Board approvals, not required. And your attorney can instruct on some of these issues if there's questions. I ask that the Board give consideration and great weight to the uncontroverted testimony that was previously offered by Mr. Hodges, the Chief Strategy Officer for Care One, who established through his testimony the urgent need for this facility, and who testified that the unserved need in and around Edison has reached a crisis level. I ask that the Board give great weight and consideration to Mr. Hodges' uncontroverted testimony that established that in Edison and within five miles of the subject site, over 5,700 people and families and their loved ones, there are people who are suffering from Alzheimer's or other dementia, where there's only 342 beds that exist, all of them full, and all of them in facilities that range from 15 years old to 40 years old. These people and their families are in dire need of the services and the care that this assisted living residents would provide. And over the one-plus years that we've been here presenting this application, these 5,700 people and their families are patiently waiting for more facilities to come online. In addition to the 5,700 people suffering from dementia we've spoken about, there are also the individuals, which we'd be remiss not to mention, and their families, who are elderly and are not afflicted with Alzheimer's or other dementia, but who also need a residence where they can live and receive assistance with their daily tasks. Over the course of the past year or so, Care One has presented seven witnesses in support of this application, six of them expert witnesses. We have Mr. Michael Fowler, from, our Care One's professional engineer, who testified that Care One, and has proposed landscaping grading plans with nearly 1,000 plannings, all of which is actually spelled out on the plans, that will be planted at higher elevation to more effectively screen the facility from the two- or three-story residences, or, from the few residences that would be impacted. Mr. Fowler also presented, just by way of reminder, section drawings that illustrate at the growth of the proposed trees, of the planning versus the five-year mark and the 10-year mark. These section drawings demonstrate that, over time, the majority of the proposed building is gonna be screened. Care One also proposes light poles that are 16 feet high without spillover, and is proposing an eight-foot-high fence, and will locate parking away from residents. These are a few examples of the ways in which Care One is seeking through the site design to minimize negative impacts on the adjacent residences. The Board also heard from Michael Pomerico, Care One's architect, specializing in the design of healthcare facilities. By way of reminder, he testified that there is a certificate of need for this 106-bed facility at this location issued by the Department of Health, and that certificate need was put into evidence. Mr. Pomerico explained the importance of creating a state-of-the-art facility that meets the needs of the area's residents and families. He explained the fundamental right of an individual needing assistance or treatment due to mobility impairments, cognitive impairments, cardiopulmonary issues and the like, to be able to live with dignity in a safe, home-like setting. Mr. Pomerico explained that the facility was designed to blend with the residential character of the adjacent homes, with a gabled roof, double-hung windows, and residential-type siding materials. Mr. Pomerico sought to justify the height of the building, explaining that the changes in code requirements have driven the heights of these facilities higher, because it has become necessary to provide more room to install larger ductwork. Mr. Pomerico stated that only 24% of the building would exceed the 40-foot height limit, and only by seven feet, and that the gabled roof residential design nature will also screen some of the rooftop units. And in response to a request by Mr. Taglianietti to provide additional information, the Board will call Mr. Pomerico prepared and presented a rooftop mechanical line-of-site diagram to corroborate his prior testimony. As the Board is aware, and by way of reminder, we also heard from Matthew Morello, Care One's acoustical engineering expert. He submitted an evaluation report and testified that, with respect to the emergency generator, when it runs, and even under a full load, the sound levels at the property lines will be significantly less than the maximum permitted pursuant to the standards and requirements issued by the Department of Environmental Protection. We've heard from Daniel DiSario, Care One's traffic engineer. He submitted a traffic and parking report that contained detailed empirical data demonstrating, among other things, that both the existing skilled nursing facility driveway and the proposed assisted living facility driveway will operate at a level of service C, which is considered a very favorable situation in the industry. Mr. DiSario further stated that there will be only one car every five to six minutes that will turn left towards the troubled intersection of Inman Avenue and Old Raritan Road. Mr. DiSario explained his research regarding parking for Care One's assisted living facilities that demonstrated that the parking demand for this facility is 69 spaces, and Care One is providing 92, which is more than compliant with the township's ordinances. As a result of his research, Mr. DiSario concluded that the assisted living facility would be a low-traffic generator, and therefore not have negative impacts on the surrounding roadways, as that's understood by the municipal land use law. We also heard from Marie Stack, Care One's real estate valuation expert. He submitted a valuation report testifying that, based upon the test he utilized to determine proposed assisted living facilities and their impact, that there would not be a diminution in value of adjacent homes, and testified, based upon his research and his empirical data, that the assisted living facility would have no negative valuation impact upon the residences in the area. Paul Phillips, Care One's professional planner, if you'll recall, reviewed all the statutory criteria required to be met in order for the Board to grant the variances required for both the proposed assisted living facility and the skilled nursing home. As this Board knows, and will no doubt be instructed by its counsel, it must apply the CECA criteria when considering an inherently beneficial use, which this is. The intent of the CECA case, and by imposition of an itemized balancing test through that case, is to strongly encourage the approval of inherently beneficial uses. The reason for this is that, because of the nature of the use itself, courts acknowledge that the use is very important to the community. We submit that where the inherently beneficial use ranks high, which we would submit the uncontroversial testimony of Mr. Phillips demonstrates, where there is a severe deficiency in the meaning of a need, which, again, Mr. Hodges testified in an uncontroverted manner, is the case here, the result compels a basis for the Board to approve this application. In applying the CECA standard to this site and both facilities on the site, Mr. Phillips testified that, due to the critical nature of the need for the use in the area, skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities rank very high on the public interest scale. He testified that Care One has made reasonable efforts to mitigate any visual impact through extensive planning setbacks in site design, as well as to have a residential character to its building design. Mr. Phillips also reviewed the applicable case law for height and floor area ratio variance, and his uncontroversial testimony in this regard determined that the site can accommodate the variances requested. Mr. Phillips also spoke to the master plan, which has come up a few times tonight, as well as the reexamination reports, and the policy directive advocates for the construction of assisted living facilities to meet the needs of Edison's aging population. The master plan, as testified to by Mr. Phillips, recommends that the zoning ordinance be amended to permit this type of use, but unfortunately, as of present, nowhere in Edison's zoning ordinances are assisted living facilities in expressly permitted use. Mr. Phillips thus concluded his testimony by stating in his opinion, based upon all the facts presented for this application, and based upon all applicable legal criteria, approval of the application is warranted. Now, the Board heard from two experts presented by the objectors in this matter. There was a traffic expert who we would submit offered, or what we would describe as net opinion, testifying regarding conditions at an intersection where a school lets out half a mile away, and who presented acoustical testimony for which Care One, through its own expert, provided testimony that we would submit means that the acoustical testimony submitted by the objector should not be given weight. The two objectors also presented a planner who attempted to give some engineering and environmental science testimony, again, outside the scope of planning testimony. Most importantly, on the issue of that environmental testimony that was offered, we'd have to note that the issuance of permits from the Department of Environmental Protection, dealing with wetlands and other issues, is within the exclusive jurisdiction of the Department of Environmental Protection, and Care One acknowledges its obligation to comply with those regulations. Thus, the testimony of those two witnesses should not be given weight in this scenario. Now, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up, and again, your attorney can speak to this, there are, there's an issue of the Fair Housing Act. The Board has a certain memo prepared by Morris James that explains the Court's consistent application of the Fair Housing Act amendments to invalidate ordinances that discriminate against the elderly and handicapped by failing to provide them with the same opportunities to live in residential neighborhoods as individuals who are not elderly or handicapped. And consistent with the Court's views demonstrating a strong public policy favoring assisted living facilities, as recently as October 10, 2019, in the case of 431 East Palisades Avenue Real Estate LLC versus City of Englewood, the United States District Court for the District of New Jersey granted Care One's application for preliminary injunction against Englewood and ruled that Englewood zoning ordinances were facially discriminatory against elderly and handicapped, because they permit assisted living facilities in only one zone, and because assisted living facilities are not permitted anywhere where residential use is primary. As Mr. Phillips had testified, assisted living facilities are not an expressly permitted use in any zone in Edison. The zoning ordinance is devoid of any specific use for that, despite the master plan's recommendation that assisted living facilities be permitted in Edison's zoning ordinance as of right to meet the needs of an aging population. And there's a similar case which came out recently on October 9th of 2019, Blake Gardens versus the State of New Jersey, also decided by the United States District Court for the State of New Jersey. And in that case, the Court struck down as discriminatory and therefore unconstitutional a 2015 state law that removed assisted living facilities as a conditional use pursuant to the municipal land use law, and then placed them under the Department of Health regulations. The law had the effect of preventing assisted living facilities from being considered as a conditional use and requiring them to instead seek use variance. That's some legal issues your attorney can advise you on it, but, again, be remiss not to bring it up. But to move towards the summary, Care One has established all of the requisite legal criteria enabling this Board to grant its application. An assisted living facility is a highly ranked inherently beneficial use. There are no detrimental traffic impacts, as testified to by our experts. There is no detrimental impact upon residential property values in the surrounding area. And even with the addition of 1,000 plannings, the visual impacts to a few homes on Lewis Court is not substantial, and Care One has, through its site design and building design, made reasonable efforts to mitigate visual impacts. This facility will service hundreds upon hundreds of people and their families over time. Those elderly and handicapped persons are in need and cannot be denied this care simply because there is a concern that, and I think it's reflected in some of the, some of the testimony given tonight, that it would just be preferred that this not be in their backyard. This Board does not serve Care One, which I think everybody in the room would agree with, but we would, on behalf of Care One, submit the Board also doesn't simply serve individual neighbors. What this Board should consider is the need to service the 5,700 individuals suffering from Alzheimer's, along with their families, and, in other words, serve the public interest as it deliberates. For those reasons, it's respectfully requested that Care One at Birchwood LLC's application be approved. Now, in... Now, in, pursuant to my discussion with the board's attorney, there is a, there's a two-part kind of to this. There's a use variance associated with the memory care, but there is an existing nursing home on the site that pertains to the skilled nursing facility that's there. And there's one variance associated with that, new variance. There's a, well, there's an existing sign which is, I believe it's six foot ten inches where six feet is permitted. Additionally, the application pertaining to the skilled nursing facility proposes to allow previously approved eleven landback spaces to be constructed. There's additionally four net additional spaces that are being proposed. We're also seeking to approve a trash compactor location that was not located where it's being proposed right now pursuant to a prior approval on that skilled nursing facility. There's a sidewalk at the rear of the skilled nursing facility that wasn't previously approved in the prior application, and it's needed to service an existing door. And there is a site lighting issue. There's two poles located in different locations than what is actually approved on the prior plans. The first pole is about five feet off of where it was shown on the plans. And the second pole is going to be relocated if the aforementioned four parking spaces are permitted and approved to be constructed in conjunction with the eleven landbank spaces which we've already spoken to. So, that's really the segregating the two issues.
Thank you, sir. I will have Ms. Shaw explain how we are now going to separate this and vote in two steps.
Okay, there's two parts to this application. One part has to do with improvements to, and improvements and approvals of various things with respect to the existing skilled facility, including the inclusion of the prior eleven landbank spaces and four net additional parking spaces to improve the traffic circulation and parking issues. The trash compactor location, as was just pointed out, and there's an existing sign that where six feet is permitted, it would be six feet ten inches. And then there is a sidewalk at the rear that services an existing door, there's, which was not on the prior approval. There's also site lighting issue with one pole, which is, I guess, five feet off, and then the second pole, which is going to be relocated if you approve the parking spaces. The first part of though, this application has to do with the assisted facility that is proposed. That would be a brand-new facility. And that is a use variance with associated bulk variances. So, first, if the board could have a motion on the assisted living facility and then the second part on the skilled facility, that would clarify the record going forward.
Okay, so this is on the proposed new facility, this motion?
Correct, the first motion.
Yep. Do I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Comba.
Madam Chair, to begin, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the applicant. I'd like to thank the objectors and both teams of professionals. I'd like to thank the affected residents, members of the public who closely follow this process and the long proceedings of this case. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our board's team of professionals, our planner, our engineer, our attorney, our zoning official, zoning staff, and board secretary. Without them, this board cannot function. The case before us has been a long, drawn-out process. We began our path to this point over a year ago. Thank you to all the parties involved for your patience. With that, Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny the assisted living portion of this application. While the board recognizes that the services provided by facilities such as Care One are beneficial, the impact this project would have on the neighborhood far outweighs any benefit that this project may result on this site. The applicant seeks approval for a three-story, 106-bed assisted living facility. This project is located in a primarily single-family residential neighborhood. It is belief of this board that this neighborhood should remain as such. Given this neighborhood is a single-family residential neighborhood, the operation of this facility would be a detriment to the neighborhood and not well-suited in this location. This project's anticipated operation would result in considerable noise pollution from a generator on-site, garbage pickups, multiple daily deliveries, as well as additional traffic and daily operations of such a facility of this size and scale would intensify the use of this site and cause a public detriment. During the proceedings, this project's size was compared to putting a mountain in someone's backyard by our planner. The looming presence of a building of this size and scale will be a constant inconvenience to residents. Due to the varied grading of the land, the structure would appear in excess of sixty feet at certain points. The applicant has proposed an ambitious planning plan to screen the project from neighbors. Under a quote "best-case scenario", the proposed plannings would not acceptably screen the structure for an estimated ten years. This is not a reasonable request of the neighbors. Further, as noted by our planner, the types of plannings proposed for this site would not adequately screen the structure from the surrounding neighborhoods in the winter months with the loss of foliage. Of particular note, on February 26, 2019, the applicant requested a delay in the proceedings in order to consider a plan modification to quote "reduce impact". This consideration was never brought to fruition, displaying the realization of the applicant the intensity of this project. Had this project been brought to the board with a reduction in height as well as the size of the facility, it may have been a more agreeable and more consistent with the existing neighborhood and more in line with this township's master plan. The applicant has not met all of the negative and positive criteria. This site is not particularly well-suited for the use intended. This application would be a detriment to the public good and public safety. As a result, I hereby make a motion to deny this application for a 90,000-square-feet, three-story assisted living facility. Thank you.
Just to clarify, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second. And I would just like to echo Mr. Comba's sentiments, and I do feel that this just is an over-intensified use of that property.
Okay, before Cassandra does a roll call, just so that there is no confusion, we have a motion to deny. If you vote yes, that means you, yes, you deny the, you agree to deny the application. If you vote no, that means you want the application to go forward. So, again, yes means you do not want the application to go forward. Having said that, Cassandra, call the roll, please.
And this is just for the assisted living facility portion?
This is just the assisted living, correct, the first part of this.
Okay. Mr. Comba?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Schmuell?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
This has been a year-long process.
Go right ahead.
I do agree that there is a need for additional special care facilities in Edison, New Jersey. However, in accordance with the master plan and listening to the neighbors tonight, I don't agree with the expansion of such facility at this location. So, I would say yes on the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, I agree with the motion.
Mr. Mansuri?
Yes, I agree with the motion.
Mr. Sadadha?
Yes, I agree to the motion.
Vice Chair Skibar?
Yes, on the motion.
And Chairwoman Federick?
Yes, to deny. And I too, this is, it would be a tremendous, horrendous visual noise and light impact on the neighborhood. And yes, to deny. Thank you. Now, the second, I need the second part of this. Now, we're going to go to the second part of this. Now, I need a motion for the second part, for the existing facility.
Okay, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion for the aforementioned variances on the existing facility. I would like to see, you know, I guess, some improvements and allow some, you know, improvement for the neighborhood and for the facility.
Do I have a second, a motion to approve this one?
Second.
Okay. Cassandra, please.
Mr. Comba?
No on the motion.
Mr. Schmuell?
No on the motion.
Mr. Taglianetti?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Mansuri?
No on the motion.
Mr. Sadadha?[1672.58]